Let's see, I just, I had some VPN connection issues, so I just got on. I'm looking to see that everybody from the council is present, except I don't see Scott, I don't see the two Scots. Oh, there's one Scott, I found one Scott.
Scott Mcfee will be joining us 15 to 30 minutes from now. He had a conflict he couldn't get out of, he'll be coming in late.
Okay, so this other Scott is Scott Cowan?
Scott Cowan is here, I believe. Dave is here, John Sullivan is here as well. So we're all of the council with exception of Scott Mcfee, who will be joining us within a half hour.
Got it.
Okay, so let me, I need again for everybody to please mute their microphones if you're not a member of the council because it'll interfere with our ability to hear. So please do that. Okay, process for tonight, as we go through our agenda. First of all, thank you all for being here. We have a number of folks way beyond normal and that's really awesome to see. So there will be a number of times when public has the boat to speak to us. That would be as we go through the agenda, if you have a concern, like to have you raise your hand as opposed to jumping in. And you can do that, if you raise your hand, go on your screen to the participants' point down at the bottom. Click on that, it will show you who's in the meeting. And below that panel on the right-hand side, you'll have a raised hand function. I will be looking for that if somebody wants to speak to us. Once we get to the hearing that's on the agenda, I'll talk more about the details of that a little later. So and you'll have a funny.
CMRA, please log on.
Again, please, mic, close your mics, thank you. So there are really three number of opportunities tonight for the public to participate. As we go through the agenda, if you have an issue or question, raise your hand. At the hearing, there will be an opportunity. And then we have a place for open public comments at the end of the meeting. So opportunities are there for you to speak to us and we look forward to that. So roll call has been conducted, any conditions, a change or additions to the agenda, anybody? If not, let's jump down to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the city council meeting on September 8th, the work session on the 22nd, and the report of city council payable. So you have three consent agenda honors, which you can approve all at once or pull up for discussion. What's your pleasure, council?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion from John Sullivan, a second from Scott Cowan to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, please raise your hand, hit the yes button, yes or no button on the bottom of your panel over there. Scott, you able to do that? Got a vote from everybody but Scott Cowan. Okay, all right. Okay, thanks Scott, okay, motion's taken, thank you very much. Moving on to guest presentations, Lieutenant Fountain, you're out there, I see your picture.
Yes, sir.
The sheriff's office report, please.
So for September 2020, traffic citations, just going down the numbers here. 13 traffic citations for the month, 13 traffic warnings, two crashes, seven arrests, and then 125 overall complaints for a total of 72 hours.
Okay.
Yeah, one thing that looked like picked up a little bit is just you've been getting a lot more vehicles broke into and thefts. And then one break-in at Sunbelt where they were leaving in a box truck had a bunch of stuff stored up, tried to get away from the deputies and they end up stopping them and arresting them.
Brandon, you work in your capacity with all of the rural cities under contract, the sheriff's office. How would you compare what's going on in Millersburg with the rest of the county in terms of numbers of incidents for the city our size?
For the city your size, I would say it's similar. There has been an increase in some of that area, your guys' area. There seems to be a lot of traffic in there right now. I think some of it's probably from all the construction and that draw. But as far as like the types of crimes, I was just looking over all the other reports too. And the last few months, we were getting a lot of the more of the domestics and that type of stuff. And this month, we seem to transition into a lot more of the smaller thefts from people.
Thank you. Questions of Brandon from council? You're getting off easy tonight.
I guess so.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. Moving on next to fire department. And I saw Mr. Wooton here someplace.
Hello, mayor, council staff, good evening. Shane Wooton here, our chief Albany fire department. Let's see here, it looks like Janelle, I'm missing maybe part of the slide there.
All right, are you looking for the next slide?
There you go, perfect, perfect, all right. So I'll go over the report that should be in your packet and highlight a couple items. One, so far this fiscal year, there's been 71 calls in the city of Millersburg. There were 59 this time last year. So you know, you're up 12 calls, but we're only three months into the year. Regarding your response times or our response times, they were up a little bit the first three months from the average from fiscal year 20. So I dug into it a little deeper to figure out where that 25 seconds might have come from. Because we should be starting to get a large enough sample size that we can start, you know, really drilling down on times and understand them more. And actually, I was able to find a couple of calls that were the drivers of that difference. One was a lyft assist where the crews presumably were on scene, helped the patient, and then when they got back to their engine, they hit the button to go at scene and available. Sometimes crews can get on scene and they forget to hit the button on their, on the computer in their vehicles to put them on scene to log the time. So we had an extensive, or we had a long, a long response time, but we only had like a five-second on-scene time. So that is usually what happens there. Another one of the calls that drove the times up were a call to Simpson Park and the railroad site. You know, sometimes getting back in there takes us quite a while to navigate potentially through the gate that's back there and then to wherever, you know, sometimes we have to try to find the patients. So when I took a couple of those calls out, it dropped it down to something more in line. And given the fact that we only have 71 calls, only a couple of calls with extended response times can skew that number. So we'll keep an eye on that, but all the other times looked good. The crews are getting out in good order as well as making it to scene. Janelle, next slide, please. Here's just a breakdown of the types of calls, which I've been able to show you since I've been reporting to you. And the top four, you can see in the previous three months, those are the same as the top four for all of last fiscal year. Fall injuries, alarm activations, lyft assists, and sick person call. And why we're talking about lyft assists, I will say I did convey, or we did convey to, if you recall, in one of the previous reports that I gave, we told you about one of your constituents that needed our services quite a bit. And you asked that we relate to him that the Millersburg city council is there if he needs anything and just wanted to close the loop with you that that happened. And he was very appreciative of that. I'm not sure if I told you that last time, but I want to make sure they close the loop on that.
Well, thanks for doing that, I appreciate it.
And then, let's see here, we can go to the next slide. So one thing I want to start reporting to you is more of the, you know, I've been reporting the emergency response side, but you've gotten more when you contracted with us than just emergency response, that we're also doing fire and life safety evaluations or fire inspections in the city of Millersburg, as well as we are doing, you know, our community paramedic is actively helping people in your community. So we'll, this slide will grow over time as I get my staff to track things a bit more. But just to kind of start priming the pump, if you will, in July, we did five inspections on facilities. August 4, September, we only did one. And that was also true for the entire city of Albany. Our deputy fire marshals after Labor Day, they all rallied to the fairgrounds. And we spent, oh, probably a week and a half, two weeks there at the fairground. Well, the entire time that the evacuee center was open, we had staff down there, down there helping. And the staff that was down there helping are the ones that go out and do inspections. So in my book, that is certainly an excused reason why not to be out doing inspections, being down there helping people that were affected by the fires in San Yam Canyon.
Shane.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Kevin, hey, real quick though, in those inspections, I'm assuming, are they like when they're at Kalahdine, is that, that's just showing as one inspection even though there's probably close to 150 buildings there?
Exactly, yep.
Just want to point that out.
Yeah, thank you very much. Let's hear, we go to the next slide. So this slide, two topics I just wanted to talk on or discuss with you. Just a reminder that COVID-19 is still active in our communities. And, you know, as we go into the flu season, you know, we're already starting to see an uptick in the numbers for Lynn County, where, you know, historically up to this point, there were, you know, five, six, seven cases, new cases a day. And, you know, the last week, we've been up, you know, up around 20. And I think even the DH has written some articles on it. So that just serves, I just wanted to remind everybody and anybody who's listening just the importance of maintaining social distancing, washing your hands, and all of us doing what we can to, you know, to decrease the effect that COVID-19 has on our community. And here's just a picture of some of our people and some of the equipment that they're wearing on every call that they go out on. I'd also be remiss not to mention our involvement in this year's fire season. In this slide, we've gone on six different fires where we've helped other communities stand back up after a large fire has affected them. You know, the Beechy Creek, that was the one up in the San Yam Canyon, that and the Lion's Head, which we didn't have resources on, that affected our local community and may be very well affected. Well, I'm sure there's people in the city of Millersburg that live there that have family members that were affected by that fire. Likewise, we've sent resources down to California. And currently on the Glass Fire, we still have resources down there. We found out today that they're going to be coming home on Friday, but they've spent the last two weeks down there. So next slide, Janelle, this will be my last slide, sorry for the long, long presentation. I need to learn from Brandon, Brandon's pretty darn quick. Let's see here, so on behalf of the department, I just really want to say that we are all appreciative of the city of Millersburg, you know, working with you, councillor Cowan, Kevin and Janelle. It has been so wonderful working with them on the Station 15 project. You know, early on, we weren't sure what sort of feedback our crews would be able to give, but you've been absolutely nothing but great partners. And, you know, we've had the ability to talk with all the shifts and show them where this project is going, and they've been able to provide feedback. And the beauty of it is, not only were they able to provide feedback, but some of that feedback was taken, which they see and just means a ton to them. So a big thank you to all of you for including us in that project. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
First of all, Shane, thank you. And your presentations are not too long. I really appreciate what you put into this and the data you bring to us. We've come a long way in two years with your help and your, and then the department. So thank you so much. And yeah, you're not too long, it's good stuff, I appreciate it. Questions or comments from other council members? Okay, Shane, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
John Pascon, are you with us?
Yes, I am, I'm here.
Okay, you're by.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're by telephone only, right?
Yes.
Okay, here's, I'd like to just kind of review with you what I hope to do here. Go through your presentation. I'd like council to ask any questions they need to, to make sure that we're in position to approve. Hopefully, your recommendation, I'd like to hold that approval off however to his current position on under new business. So, but this gets you out of here much more quickly if we can pull this off. So I'd ask for you to provide your overview with the enterprise zone situation for the lines. Council asks questions, and if you're not comfortable with approving it, let's resolve those questions now. And I plan to have it on the agenda for later for approval. So go ahead, John.
Okay, thanks, mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So the city of Millersburg and Lynn County are cosponsors in the Lynn County Enterprise Zone. And Frank Lumber up in the San Yam Canyon is working on almost a $10 million investment to improve a new saw line. It's about the 50-year-old line, doesn't seem too old, but I guess it's getting old and they hope to replace that line and be more efficient. So in cases like this, companies can invest dollars and if they can increase, improve a increase in productivity by 10%, they can waive the job requirement. So the regulations allow companies to make improvements and improve efficiencies and productivity without increasing jobs. Normally, you'd have to increase your job count by 10%. So as we did, as we did with ATI a while ago, their investment was large enough that they didn't need to create the 10% jobs. But Frank Lumber is going for the productivity waiver because their investment isn't $25 million. So I'm asking you to just approve their resolution. It's really nothing to do with the city of Millersburg other than your cosponsors and we appreciate your support. So I'll just stand by and answer any questions.
Questions from council? Any issues?
No issues.
I'm sorry?
This is Dave, I have no issues, looks good.
Okay, thanks Dave.
Jesus, this is John.
Okay. Scott Cowan, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good with that, it sounds good, good report.
Scott Mcfee is not here yet, so John, we're good. We will process it under a resolution under new business, so I think you're good to go, thank you.
Thank you so much, you have a great meeting.
Okay, take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, and their public comment, this is a section for the public to speak to the council on issues that they might have. This is not specifically for the land use code public clearing, this is everything else. So if there are folks out there who'd like to address the council, first of all, we'll take a raised hand by those who are on visual with us. So feel free to raise your hand if you do have something you'd like to talk to us about and we'll call on you accordingly. When we get through that process, if nobody raises a hand or after they do, then we'll ask you to talk to us via your phone. So anybody want to talk to the council at this point on the computer?
Mayor Scott just came on.
Thank you.
And I am going to need to unmute all in order for people on the phone to speak. On possibly others, I did have to mute a few people along the way.
Okay.
If people have muted themselves, it shouldn't take them off of mute, but I will do that when you're ready for phone call, phone comment.
Let's do it now then, Janelle, thank you. So those of you, anybody, when the public would like to address the council, you're welcome to do that right now. Anybody?
My name is Jordan Schweiger and I would like to address the council.
Okay, give me your street name, please. Can you provide your spelling of your name and your street, please?
Old Salem Road.
Okay, this is not working, folks. So let's, everybody who is not speaking, please self-mute your phones. And if somebody was trying to address, please try it again.
So this is Jordan Schweiger and we are at 5880 Old Salem Road.
Okay.
I am with the Tabernaculo De Sion. And we would like to address the council to ask for a zone change.
Is this, sir, does this pertaining to the zoning concerns that you have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do is ask you to hold off until we go through the hearing. The hearing we're going to have here in a few minutes is where we will talk about that. So I'd ask you to please stand by, I'll come back to you on that very issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, okay. Anybody else? All right, hearing none.
That was Andrew, if you want to step out of the car, you can call him back.
Okay, so let's move into the public hearing. Again, if you're not speaking, I'd ask you to mute your phones, your microphones. We have a public hearing to adopt our new, in preparation for adopting our new land use code, new being that it's being updated after many, many, many years. But it's been a two-year process where we deal with zoning, comprehensive plan map, and amendments to the plan itself. So this opportunity is to gain input from the public, followed by questions and deliberation by city council in preparation for taking an action on this event, on this document. So the process will start like this, I will, I will open the hearing. I will ask staff, specifically Matt, to review what's in front of us, give us an outline of what has happened, what's changed, and give us some insight. And then I will seek public input. That input should be, we'll do it again in two different ways. One, by video first, again, the raising of the hand, and then followed by telephone. I want to break this up into two parts. First one being the zoning concerns, which I believe is probably the greatest single item out there that's got people's concerns or they have input for us about. So we'll go through the zoning process followed by the rest of the plan. I'd like to leave this to three minutes per person. And once somebody has spoke and provided feedback or input, I'd like them to provide the council opportunity to ask questions of that person for clarification. Once we go through the process of people regarding input, I seek clarification and go through, everybody's had a chance to speak and I've worked very hard to make sure that everybody does get a chance to speak. We will close the hearing, the council will then deliberate and have a discussion around whether or not to approve this document. Questions on that from council? Okay, I wanted to go and open the hearing then for the approval of the land use code along with zoning maps and comprehensive plan changes. So the hearing is open, and Matt, I'd like to provide us an overview, please.
Thank you, chair, everybody hear me okay out there?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, chair, fellow council members. Matt Street presenting for staff this evening. And the grand architect of our new code, Mr. John Morgan, is also on the phone. So why upbeat the code, why now? The code was adopted 1976. The city is changing rapidly, there is less agricultural and more single-family homes. The growth in Millersburg is outpacing the projections. Additionally, a holistic change helps us better align with state mandated changes to the code, like the flood section that you've seen in the code that we're proposing. The city has provided ample opportunity for public input, including 16 workshops that were open to the public and one open house as pictured in this slide here. So as you mentioned, the request before you tonight includes four different elements. The city is proposing to replace the entire development code. That also requires an all-new zoning map, amendments to the comprehensive plan, and those just to ensure that the new code and the comprehensive plan are consistent with each other. And with this, staff is also proposing to reintroduce the idea of a standalone comprehensive plan map, which we're going to discuss in more detail in a moment. We will also be rescinding all of the old ordinances that collectively make up the current development code, though this will be done as part of the adoption of the ordinance at the end. So let's take a closer look at each of those four items. We're going to start with the development code. Here you can see the existing zones contrasted with the new zones. Some of these are very familiar and similar to the existing zones. Some of them are a little bit different or new altogether. So we're going to walk through these real quickly and explain kind of what the differences are. The classic urban conversion idea has given way to two zones instead, a rural zone and a residential low zone. Minimum lot size for the residential low zone remains the familiar 10,000 square foot minimum. For the rural zone, the minimum lot size is 2.5 acres. The rural zone is generally areas without access to sewer and areas that intend to continue to foster animal keeping and agricultural uses in the city. Accessory dwelling units are allowed in either one of those zones. In the residential low zone, however, accessory structures have to match the main house. Duplexes will continue to be allowed on corner lots only in the RL zone. The mixed density zone features a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet for single-family homes and 3,500 square feet for attached product like duplexes. Residential accessory dwelling units are still allowed in that zone, as are multifamily units such as condos or apartments and residential care facilities. So in the interest of time, I was not going to go through all the zones that are generally similar to the ones that exist today. Those include public facility, limited industrial, general industrial, and general commercial, because those are all very similar to the zones that we have existing today in our code. Commercial office is an all-new designation. This is intended to act as a better transition to neighboring zones. Retail is still allowed in this zone as long as it is under 2,000 square feet in size. No drive-through food is allowed, however, restaurants are permitted if they are within an office building. So the idea is, you know, a snack eatery or something like that in a larger office structure. Mixed uses is an exciting new zone that we have in our proposed code. This too is intended to transition between neighboring uses. It allows flexibility in uses, however, a project must still include at least some residential and some non-residential uses. So it genuinely has to be a mix of uses, not just all of one or all of the other. No drive-through restaurants are permitted in this zone and no single-family residential is permitted in the zone. There are several other changes to our code and there are far too many to list, but I wanted to hit some of the highlights for you tonight. We've included a lot of images that are used throughout the code to make it more clear to implement. The definitions section has been expanded. Home occupations are now permitted by right and there's no need for a separate permit for those, or still standards, but not a separate permit. There is now a process to modify approved projects. The code includes a new zone overlay for historic properties. The code folds in new state flood code requirements as well. The sign section has been significantly expanded and includes much more detail. Planned unit developments, or PUDs, have remained as an option. There is a section regarding mobile food vending now as well. And there is also now a process for adjustments, which kind of acts like a minor variance. So moving on to the zoning map, this is largely similar to the existing zoning map that we have today. This helps keep it, keep us in good standing with the state as far as transportation planning requirements are concerned. Some properties, however, are proposed for some slightly more significant changes. So we're going to take a look at three different areas of our. So we're going to take a look at three different areas of our city in more detail. So here we're in the northeast corner of the city. The area that is near the on-ramp is planned for mixed use. This is to afford maximum flexibility as a tool to help that area develop. In order to keep that development consistent, we've also proposed a mixed-use zone on the small landlocked parcel located next to the mixed-use area. Loves has really changed the landscape up there of that off-ramp. And staff feels now that the area along Old Salem would be better suited to commercial uses. Now, that would also include the Trade Winds property, as you can see here, which is already built out. We were very well aware of that. But this just helps clarify that if that property were to ever redevelop, we would want to see more commercial-style uses on that property. The old school property is proposed to be commercial office, and this is intended to assure that future uses on that property will have minimal impact to the surrounding neighbors. So this takes us to the middle of the city, along the eastern edge of the city, kind of where we're sitting right now in City Hall. We're proposing to create a town center. Now, this is an old idea. This was actually required in the first version of the comprehensive plan, but the city has never actually done anything to make it happen. The zoning map here helps bring us closer to that goal by changing a number of zones in this area. The property to the north of the town center is proposed to be commercial office. This is intended to kind of transition the uses between the commercial use and more intense industrial uses to the north and to the east. Unlimited industrial and general industrial property near the intersection of Old Salem and Konzer are proposed to be changed to general commercial to help further the idea of a town center. Now, we don't expect these properties to build out right away, but in order to help implement the comprehensive plan requirement for a town center, this helps get us in the right direction. So moving on to the southern corner of the city, we propose to change the area near I-5 from limited industrial to general industrial. The primary difference between those two is generally outside storage. We are proposing the same area, the same changes for the area on the west side of Old Salem near the south end of town. However, here we are proposing a small strip of commercial office along the street to essentially require the businesses to put their offices in front near the street to buffer the uses. This actually mirrors what a lot of the development has already done out there. We're just trying to make sure that new uses follow that same pattern. Regarding the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, this is not intended to be a holistic update of the plan. Rather, the proposed amendments are targeted to only keep the plan consistent with the new development code. As the council already knows, the city is planning to totally update its comprehensive plan soon. This is not that update. Most of the changes that we're proposing here are just to the land use section. Lastly, staff's proposing an all-new map for the comprehensive plan. The city currently uses a one-map system. Now, what that means is that our zoning map also is our comprehensive plan land use designation map. And any changes to that map today are actually zoning and comprehensive plan amendments. So that makes it hard for developers to make changes or respond to changing market conditions. The city actually has had a two-map system at one point, and we're simply proposing to reintroduce that concept. Now, this can be a little bit confusing, how the two maps play together. So I wanted to walk through an example, real quickly, of what exactly it means to have a comprehensive plan map and a zoning map, and how those two work together. So this slide shows two kind of sections of maps. And this is an area very near City Hall, kind of right down the street here. So hypothetically, let's say that the property down the street with that beautiful barn on it, on Konzer, wants to change the zoning. And again, this is just a hypothetical example. They didn't ask for this. The map on the top shows the comprehensive plan land use designation, and the map below shows the zoning. So let's say the owner wants to change the property from its current designation of residential low to residential medium, or mixed density, rather. Say, that would require a comprehensive plan and a zone change. However, under the new map system, that property would be in a residential comprehensive plan land use designation. So the comprehensive plan land use designations are intended to be more general. So here, any residential zone that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan land use designation of residential, in other words, they all fit under the umbrella of a residential classification. So if the applicant proposes to change from, say, rural to rural medium, then that change, or not rural medium, from rural to residential mixed density, and that does not need a comprehensive plan amendment, nor does a change from RM to RL need one. However, if the applicant wanted to change to something else, say, general commercial, then that would not fit under this residential umbrella, and they would still need to go through a comprehensive plan land use amendment as well. In order to support the project tonight, we have to establish that the required criteria are all met. The staff report went through this in great detail, and I did not plan to walk through those in this presentation here tonight. Staff has shown in the staff report that all the required criteria and applicable comprehensive plan policies and all state goals have been met. So before we present the Planning Commission's recommendations, staff wanted to go through a few minor changes that have resulted through the hearings process. Those are outlined in a memo that was provided to the city council earlier today in an email. We provided the city council with a revised version of the code last week. And that reflected some small edits, made the correct reference errors and typos and things like that. But we did make three slightly more significant changes. We changed the way the vision clearances were measured, and we're actually making it consistent with the graphic that was already part of the code previously. We added a standard to the flood section to make it more strict and more stringent than the state's flood code section, so that's allowed. And we added the ability to move an existing billboard in our signs section. We also proposed some small changes to the maps, so we're going to look at each of those right now as well. This map shows the changes to the proposed zoning map. Again, these are revisions that were requested after the Planning Commission version of the map was created and submitted to the Planning Commission. And it looks like there's a lot of changes here, but they're not that complicated. Let me walk through them real quickly here. Three of these are basically just fixing errors that were related to basins, already publicly-owned property, and we wanted to fix those designations to reflect that. Three of these changes were requested by property owners, and we supported most of the requests that property owners made. One change near the park is changing from public to residential. This actually started out as residential, and we switched it to public just in case the park wanted to expand. But after a conversation with the applicant, Kevin felt it was more appropriate to switch it back to residential. So we're not changing the zoning on that applicant's property. This change here was created by staff to kind of help square up the zoning in this area. The fire station is going in, and we accidentally called the property for the fire station "commercial." So we switched that to public, and when we did that, it created kind of an anomaly in the land pattern. So what we did was we took our proposed general commercial designation and kind of dragged it westerly a little bit to where we're expecting a street to go up there and kind of bifurcate that. The last change that we wanted to mention was the name of the public zone on the map actually wasn't correct. On the zoning map, we called it public with a P for an acronym, when in actuality, the code calls it public facilities with a PF acronym, so we switched that around. Now, the comp plan map also requires changes and adjustments to match up with the changes that we just discussed on the zoning map. So again, let me walk through those real quickly. Three of those are simply fixing errors related to basins. Two of those were changes requested by property owners. The change near the park that we talked about needs a comprehensive plan designation of residential, so we're proposing to switch that. And the last change, again, squares up that zoning that we talked about by the fire station. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve the project and adopt ordinance 178-20. We have a recommended motion here on this slide as well. That concludes staff's presentation. Myself, Kevin, Janelle, and John Morgan are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, John, for your help as well. This has been a two-year process led by Matt and John. John probably led the process, of course, with staff, with Forest, with Planning Commission. So this is hopefully coming to an end of this two-year process. So enough of that. Right now, I will go ahead and begin to take public input and starting with those on the computer at first, which I ask you to raise your hands. But I'm going to go ahead and go immediately to Mr. Schweiger, who was trying to talk before. So I'll give you first up, sir, if you are still there.
Hang on, I need a second to get him. I need to unmute his phone. So hang on a second while I find the right one. Okay, it should be unmuted now.
Okay. So, Mr. Schweiger, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
So go ahead and provide us your input, please.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Of course, I go ahead and provide us your input. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, I am here as a, I guess, a representative and speaking on behalf of myself and some of the congregants of the Tabernaculo De Sion. And they would like to ask for, and I echo support for, the idea of rezoning the entire property of the old school, the address I gave earlier, to be residential and that the existing use of the church be deemed a continuing use since the school was intended to teach, and the church is in keeping with that. They keep the word of God here. So they're still teaching. But the surrounding vacant land of the entire property, they would like to see that develop into housing of the same sort that is contiguous to the property, which is to say residential zoning for 10,000 square foot lots down to that size, 10,000 square foot lots. And we feel that Millersburg needs more housing, and this would be a benefit to the property owners who are around the church and around the vacant lands, to see that not be vacant anymore, but to develop into 10,000 square foot lots or maybe slightly bigger and to be developed. It would add tax revenue for the city. It would take land that's currently vacant and not being used and make it productive and tax-generating, and it would bring pride of ownership in. And it would allow families to, or owners to occupy that and take care of it and pay their fair share of taxes into the city. And so we are asking for the city council to consider that this evening, to make a motion to rezone the property instead of office, what it's currently being proposed to be, to be just residential and allow the church to remain a, just maybe a non-conforming use for the residential zoning or grandfathered use, for lack of a better term. And that's what we're asking the city council to do tonight. So there's other people here, other individuals who would like to speak as well. Should we speak at the same time? I mean, I think I've taken my three minutes.
I'd like to ask you a question first.
Certainly.
A question for you. Are you the owner of the property?
No, sir, I am not.
Is the owner there?
The owner was here. He just had to leave for a family engagement. But the owner is the one who would also support this, and I could speak on behalf of the owner in that regard.
I guess, I'm only one person of the council, and I'm going to ask the council if they want to ask you questions, sir. I'm a neighbor of yours, and I really appreciate, I believe from what I see going by periodically is, I appreciate the service you provide your congregation. I think it's really awesome. However, what's been a problem for me personally is a continual hammering of residences over code violations that have existed there on an ongoing basis, which representatives of your church and the owner of property have discussed with city staff or they have with you. I think that in and of itself makes it difficult for me to want to make significant changes to our code to accommodate something that is difficult. We tried to include housing and then that large building there as well. That's my two cents worth. I would, I guess, ask council if they have any questions at this point.
This is Cowan. A couple, I guess, a couple of questions just to, I think I would, I mean, obviously, if we were going to make a change, I think personally, the staff would want to have direct conversation with the owner. Not saying that the representative there, John, that you're not representing that. Just, I'd feel more comfortable with that if there was going to be a zone change. But I'm not, I guess, to your point, Mayor, I'm not sure about all the, you know, the background on that property. I know that there's been some concerns. But is the, would the request be that that property get completely, the 100% changed over, what I heard was changed over to like an RL and then, but grandfather the church and until they, basically, if the church, you know, moved to another location, then at that point, then that would end that clause, and they would go to an RL for that entire property. Is that what I'm hearing is, I guess that's why I need to know if, we're not talking about building houses around the current church site, right?
To answer your question, we are talking specifically about building houses around the church site. I don't know if, that this church has any plans. I'm certainly not aware of any plans the church has to vacate the church. In fact, they enjoy being part of the community and want to continue to be a part of the community. So I would say, I would let the congregants speak for themselves on that matter. I think they could speak more directly to that. I don't think they would want to see the existing use as a school be abandoned, in fact, if they ever did vacate it, simply because churches and conferences, this particular church is part of a larger conference. And many times when a particular church decides it's outgrown its location, perhaps the conference will then church plant another church in that building. And in that case, they would want to keep the zoning or they would want to keep the continued allowed use of having a church or a teaching facility in existence. So I don't, no, I don't think they would support having the zoning of the church changed. But directly to the point, they would like to see homes be able to be subdivided off of the church property and have 10,000 square foot lots be possible. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mr. Schweiger. I appreciate that. That does clarify. So you would basically re-engineer and create some additional residential homes around the current building, the school, the church, and then continue to use the church. And I agree. I love to have a church here in our community. So I just wanted to get the best picture of the suggestion or your recommendation. So thank you.
Has anybody, Mr. Schweiger, has anybody put this thought on paper? Did you laid, has an engineering firm or somebody laid out what you are visualizing with homes? Reason I'm going to ask him, I have a hard time visualizing very many 10,000 square foot lots in there and still have that parking for the church and dealing with access onto and off of Old Salem Road. I don't see how you can coordinate all that with that little space you've got to work with. So I, yeah, enough said. I don't know how you pull it off. And even if the council did provide for that zoning change.
That's a great question. Yes, it has been visualized, and there is room. I am going to put, it's kind of hard to see. I can provide a digital copy upon request. But this is, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
Does the city have that?
I do not know, but this is an example of a 16-lot configuration, which works quite nicely. Let me see if I can, there we go. So you can see that on the screen there. This is an architect's rendering, and this appears to meet the 10,000 square foot lot minimum and provide for access and leaves ample parking for the church. And it's in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. And it's more surrounds it, so it's no real And it's just, it's more of what surrounds it, so it's no real change. It's just making a higher and better use of the property, the vacant property surrounding the church.
Just a reminder, this is Matt coming in from the staff level. We don't want to try and get too lost in the weeds in the actual application process or what they're planning to do. What the city council is really looking at tonight is primarily just the land use. And I understand that some of this information is helping you understand what zone may or may not be appropriate for that property, but we probably don't want to get too much of the details of what specific use is going to be on that property because we don't have any applications to that nature in front of us tonight.
Understand, I was trying to understand what he was trying to, trying to accomplish. But that's a good point, Matt. Okay, council, any comments?
Can I ask a question, John, Eric, Jim?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, so, so I guess my question is there, is this something you guys are planning on doing very soon, soon here, which is going back to Matt's point of an application coming in?
Yes, and, yes, thank you for the question. Yes, this is something we would like to do right away in an attempt to help the, the church to own its building free and clear. We would like to be able to subdivide off that, the land, as I showed in my schematic there, my subdivision outline there. So the sale of those homes and, and land would help to just increase the resource base of the church and increase their ministry and, and just to help them improve their operations and facility. And yes, we intend to submit an application. The reason we're asking here is because we understand the zone change is, is not going towards what we envision the property being best suited for. And we would like to appeal directly to the commission since as we, or the city council, since as we understand it, the city council has it within its power to just say, make it so and work with staff to go through the necessary application and those procedures to submit for subdivision, so.
Yeah, which that makes, that makes absolute sense. And I think that's something that as, at the application time, that's something that we would, we would probably definitely, definitely look at. I'll let Matt can answer what that process is. The only reason, part of the reason that I asked that is because one thing that I found in, in building and zoning is it's very hard to go from residential to commercial property. It's a lot easier to go from commercial back to resi- resident, residential. Industrial is kind of the same. It's harder to go from commercial up to industrial, but it's a lot easier to go from in, in industrial back. So, and typically with, with, as far as land values, residential being the lowest value, commercial being somewhere in the middle, obviously depends upon low, low location, et cetera. But then you have in, in industrial, which is typically even more valuable property. So sometimes maybe, I'll let Matt answer this, and obviously that would be as the application process came in, but maybe keeping it as a commercial property for now, knowing that values there, seeing where the city goes at the application process, then we could talk, talk through that, so. Actually be good to leave it, I guess, is my point for, for now. But I'll let, I'll let Matt answer to that, to, to the, the application process, so.
So, which is not something we're dealing with tonight, so. Thanks, Scott. David or John, any comments?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with what Scott said exactly. I think at the end of the day, it all looks good and it sounds great. I have no objections to what the idea is, but you're, you're essentially wanting the same property for two uses, uses, and you just need to go through that, the process of getting that done. I, I also agree with Councilor McPhee that in your best, as far as I, my, my experience is you want to keep it commercial and go, you know, section off what you need to get to residential use, it's not the other way around because you're going to devalue your property.
This is Matt, I wanted to interject one quick point, and that's that right now we're proposing that the property become commercial office. And commercial office doesn't actually allow for a church through any kind of permit, not a conditional use permit, not in any kind of permit. It's just not an allowed use in the commercial office zone. However, the residential zone that they're asking for does allow churches with a conditional use permit. So if you made it residential today, there would be a path forward for them in their existing zone. If it goes to commercial office, there wouldn't be a path forward. Now, having that said, they could still come in and request a zone change some other day to any different zone that would allow a church. So this doesn't preclude them from trying to move forward to change that zone after this process, but they were trying to bring it forward to you now.
That's my concern. I, given the history, trying to work with the owner over the last several years, trying to work with the renters for the last several years over code violations, has not been an easy task, even getting a hold of people. I have, it's hard for me to really buy, you know, believe that this is the greatest plant that's sliced bread and is going to work today, given the history. And I, I'm not personally in favor of making a change tonight, but would be willing to listen down the road more, more intent than I suppose personally. And I guess, Matt, I'm also concerned, I guess I didn't realize that the office commercial didn't allow for a church, when in fact we know we have a church there. That's, that's kind of concerning as well.
Yeah, just another real quick point, right now they are illegally non-conforming use. They don't have any land use permits to be running a church on that property. They're illegal non-conforming use. Tonight, they would continue to be illegal non-conforming use. And it wouldn't.
Another example of being out of conformance. So I guess, I'm not ready to make a change personally tonight. There's, I'm only one out of five people here, so I guess we have the input and we can move on to other input from the community and roll this discussion in at the end, that's what we want to do with it. Everybody okay with that?
Sir, are there other people who would like to speak?
If we're going to, excuse me, if they're going to say the same things, I just assume that we continue to go forward. This is some new information to be provided.
If one, one person has new information to.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Hello, your honor, I'm sorry, hello, sir, my name is Maria Baena and I'm one of the, I'm the pastor's wife here of Tabernaculo de Sion. And we're just asking if you guys can comply and like we're talking about changing the zone to the residential. And we are just asking for your consideration and helping us out so we are able to go ahead and be able to pay this property and have it paid free, debt-free. And I know that, that you were having some, you know, some concerns and we are always willing to go ahead and help out and because we do love this community and we love this place and we are here, we want to work together and, and making every effort so we can make a nice, beautiful, you know, relationship that we can have here in our community with our neighbors and in this building too.
Okay, thank you so much. Am I correct in hearing you say, I think I heard it earlier, that the motivation behind this change is to enable you to, to receive income from the sale of houses to help pay for the property itself? Is that, is that what you're trying to pursue, correct?
Yes, yes, sir, that's what we're, you know, we're hoping for, so we can go ahead and have this with that, like, yes, without debt-free, correct? To answer your question, yes.
Thank you, okay. Anything else?
Yes, yeah, I do have someone else. Next person.
If you have, I'm going to cut this off after this one.
Yeah, I'm the last one. My name is Lindy Swager and I wanted to just say that I am in full support of this and would, I absolutely hear your concerns, Mayor, and I know that it can be frustrating dealing with a non-conforming use or, you know, as someone mentioned, a legally non-conforming use or when there are issues trying to reach people, et cetera, and I understand that. I also understand that the growth happening in Millersburg, at the beginning of the presentation, was mentioned as being greater than projected. This zone change that the church is requesting and that we are joining them in full support in requesting meets, a need for more housing in Millersburg. And the churches and peoples and communities it's based, if I just may say, are the backbone of strength in increasingly unstable atmosphere in our culture and our society. And this church body is requesting that this zone, zone change, they're requesting a full support as exhibited by, we have 53 signatures that we gathered in three days from folks who are in support of this, from this church and, and the area. And they are just, would be very appreciative if the council would consider voting for this zone change, especially considering that there's, I think, residential north, west and south of it. So again, it would just be blending in with the surrounding neighborhoods, everything to the west of, of the street of Old Salem Road. This is good for the community of Millersburg. It's attractive, single-family homes on large lots, providing growth for the city, tax revenue. And also, I just, this church is trying to be debt-free. They're trying to just have a church building, a place that they can meet and do good for the community without having the burden of debt over their head. So the sale of this land would, would benefit them tremendously in that way. And that also just spreads to the whole city of Millersburg. So with the full support of the church that meets here, this is good for the, good for Millersburg, good for the church and good for the people who want to move here. Frankly, we see no barriers to this proposal on the side of all the people that are directly affected by it. We just respectfully request your consideration and yeah, also that's the other thing is, with all due respect, we would be very, very grateful if the council would consider a vote on a zone change tonight, if, if that's at all possible, knowing that a long, drawn-out process of appealing for a zone change with an application to the city, which is an option, but if, if the council has the option to disapprove a zone change tonight, that what we understood was the possibility, that's why we came. We drummed up support, we're here, the folks have been waiting patiently and some had to leave unfortunately a little bit earlier. But it would save the church and ultimately the city a lot of time and unnecessary expense. The sooner that the homes would be able to be built, the sooner, you know, the just, the better for the whole community of Millersburg and for this church, so.
Okay, thank you.
Respect would be, just request that. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on then, thank you. I'm assuming the council, any more questions regarding this before I move on?
This is Cowan, real quick, did staff receive any, like, a plot plan or a engineering of such a request? Does staff have any, is this, is this the first time we've heard of this from staff?
No, staff has had a lot of conversations with Mr. Swager about this property and we've had conversations with the pastor as well over the number of years, but we haven't seen an actual application and we haven't seen a proposed plan for the site of any kind, no. Or anything from the, or anything from the other, either, right.
And then what I heard is that if, if we vote today and make this a commercial office as shown, that actually the church would not be legally able to occupy the, the site, which is currently the case right now, right?
Correct.
Yes, they would, yeah, they, they are a non-conforming use right now and they would continue to be non-conforming under the office designation. It doesn't mean that it starts any kind of time clock that kicks them off that property, tells them they have to stop being a church, they would just continue to be a non-conforming use, very similar to what they are today.
Okay, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to move us forward. This is one of potentially a number of topics or pieces of input tonight, so if there are others out there who would like to speak to zoning concerns or questions, if you're using a computer, try to raise your hand on that computer as we discussed earlier. And I have Wayne Scheller.
Hi there, council, mayor, thank you for taking the time, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. I don't see my video, but maybe you guys do.
Hell neither. I'm looking for you, I don't see you.
Gotcha. No, I'm not sure how to get the video going, but as long as you can.
We can see you. You can see you, your video's there.
Okay, great. So my question to you guys would be in regards to 1405 and 1415 Old Salem Road, two properties that I'm a part of, and they're currently commercial slash industrial, being changed to general industrial, not necessarily opposed to general industrial here, but the problem with that is under the general industrial zone, there is not a provision, a conditional use provision for a dwelling unit. When you have a larger industrial property, it's easy to have a onsite security guard, some 24-hour staff of some sort, as you heard from the sheriff earlier today in regards to break-ins and thefts, there is a rise in that. And so what I'd be requesting in, I guess, all of the general industrial zone is the condition which is in the general commercial zone 2.08.040 underneath conditional uses, item number one, which addresses dwelling units, that be added to the general industrial zone to allow for the security on these properties, be it needed in the future. Did that all come through?
Yes, Janelle has a picture of your properties in front of us that we're looking at. I'm familiar with the property, I'm familiar, I believe, with the residences as well. Comments? Any questions of this person, of Wayne from council?
Is John on, still?
Mayor, I don't know if John wants to provide, we were having some discussion whether this might, whether a caretaker facility may be allowed on the proposed code. And John, can you, I'll meet on that?
You're looking for John Morgan, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I'm unmuted. Makes perfect sense. I think it probably was, as much as anything, I'd call it an oversight.
I agree.
What the, you know, what, what the person testifying is bringing up is a very common thing, especially in a larger industrial area, to have a caretaker facility there for 24-hour security. In fact, I'm not even sure, I worry about it even being a conditional use, but just make a caretaker facility a permitted use as part of an industrial development, or it could be a conditional use, but whatever, but certainly the concept's absolutely appropriate.
I would, I would prefer it not be a conditional use, but yes, either way.
Okay. Question for you, Matt, if you would please, are you keeping a listing of those items that were being challenged on that we can summarize at the end or address at the end?
Yes.
Okay, because if we prepare to make a motion, somebody may want to include a change within that motion, so it'd be good to know which, which items we are considering or being asked to consider at the end when we fold this back up. Thank you. Okay.
John or Matt, Eric, real, real quickly. John or, John or Matt, since based on the current use and the fact that they do have a caretaker facility there, would this be the same as the church? If there wasn't a change, that it would be an existing non-conforming, so unless they were to go out and do something different, that would still be, that use would still be allowed, correct?
Yes, it would, but you're absolutely right, it'd be non-conforming.
Is the case at 1415 Old Salem, or excuse me, 1405 Old Salem, having a caretaker at 1415, that's not currently the case, but very well could be in the future, a need.
Okay, well, 1405 is, provides a caretaker for the RV storage area. So whereas 1415, is that not a shop type facility in there currently?
It's current, currently a, a shop. There, there is auto repair type of work. But in general, the general industrial zone, you know, who knows from year to year what type of business would be in any of the would be in any of these locations, and wanting to make sure that a onsite security caretaker is allowed, just because that's what's needed. And when you have a smaller plot, like we're talking about, I see a necessity for that.
Understand. Okay, thank you. Any other comments, sir?
None by myself.
Okay. Council?
This is Cal. Yeah, a conditional, I have some concerns about, you know, having, whatever you want to call it, you know, caretaker residents living onsite at the perspective, especially like that 1415, if it's a shop. I mean, I'd really want to be following, making sure that it's relevant to the situation on the property. So a conditional, I think, would be my thought on it, especially just seeing this kind of code type can end up having people living in areas that they really shouldn't be, and then there's fire danger and life safety issues that go hand in hand with that. So I'd be really cautious of really opening that up. And so I, it sounds like it's, the option is there, if I heard correctly from John Morgan, that it could be approved through a conditional. So if I heard that correctly, then I'm good.
Underneath the current general industrial zone, I don't see any provisions for a conditional, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, Wayne is correct. The GI zone and the LI zone don't have any provisions for what we would consider caretaker units. However, our general commercial zone does, and it's in the conditional use section. We could take that same conditional language in general commercial and add it to the LI and the GI zone, because I'm sure John would agree that's probably appropriate in both of those zones.
Yeah, in fact, I was just looking and noticed it is not in the proposed LI zone. It'd make ample sense to require it in.
Sure, sure.
Well, okay, so it sounds like that's gonna be a change, and it sounds like that's normal practice from our professionals that have been working on this. So I've heard enough. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, sir, thank you. Let me move on to the next resident that may want to speak to us. Anybody else out there on computer want to raise their hand? If not, let's open the phones up then, or unmute folks. So anybody else who has not had the opportunity to speak to us, would like to do so, Janelle's going to unmute you shortly.
Everyone is unmuted now unless they have muted themselves.
Okay. So if there are others who'd like to speak regarding, I'm gonna take it now beyond zoning. We've done, this has been primarily a zoning conversation. If you have items within the land use code modification that you'd like to discuss and/or zoning now, please speak to us and just give us your name and your street, and then leave it to three minutes. So anybody who wants to speak to us?
Yes, Mayor, this is Lisa Metz Dittmer, M-E-T-Z hyphen D-I-T-T-M-E-R. I'm at 283 54th Avenue. Hello. I have a, it's good to hear you guys, too. I have a concern with the new zoning. Our property is currently zoned as rural residential, and we have two lots that are connected. We own six acres. We have goats. We cut our hay and sell our hay. And the proposed new zoning for us is residential low. And my concern is that in residential low, yes, we might be grandfathered in as an unconditional use with our farm auxiliary buildings and our animals, but if we were to lose one of our auxiliary buildings in a fire, does that mean we can't rebuild because we are no longer rural residential? And so what I would like to propose, we have no plans on developing our property, even though the neighbor next to us developed everything this last couple of years. I would like to propose that we stay rural in your new zoning, rather than go to residential low. And I'm curious that the folks who live to the south of us, along Alexander Lane, who have mules and other animals, their properties are also being zoned as residential low. I'm interested why they didn't notice that and bring that up as well, because I would feel they're in the same position if they were to lose one of their barns due to fire, because it's no longer an accepted use, they probably wouldn't be able to rebuild.
I'm gonna ask Matt to weigh on this, because my understanding, you can rebuild. But Matt, is there, can you want to rule in on this, or Matt or John?
John, I don't know if you have that in front of you. I don't have the legal non-conforming section committed to memory yet, but my guts telling me that it says, that even if you're a non-conforming use, if you're damaged up to 80%, you can rebuild. And if it's over 80, you can't. But I have to confirm that. John, do you happen to have that information in front of you?
But they can also build res-
I'm trying right now. I'm looking it up.
But they can also build accessory buildings, and when you get that much acreage, that's a pretty, that allows a fairly large-sized accessory building to be built.
Yes, that's very true. The size of their property would allow for a much larger accessory dwelling or accessory structure to be built. That's true, based on the proposed code.
Formula.
Formula, yeah. Which allows 1,200 square feet for every 11,000 square foot lot, and then for every 1,000 square feet past 11, a lot size, you get another 1,000 square feet of accessory structure size, I believe.
They could build a horse trailer.
What is it also, if you're over two and a half acres, that that doesn't apply to you either? So that would play in, play in there.
So, yeah, we're sitting on six acres, and you guys want to make us residential low, which to me, it restricts our use of our current property.
I know, it was my-
And we have no plan of developing our property.
What was that, Lisa? What did you just say?
We don't have any plans to develop our property. We want to leave it how it is, with our six acres, be able to have our farm animals, and live our merry life, just how we are. I don't plan on developing our property at all in the future.
Right.
We've been over 18 years.
Yeah, I just like to, I noticed that I, with the memo, specifically your property, and I didn't really, I just, it drew my attention to that. And I do have, I guess, I definitely do want a ruling from Matt or John on this, of some of the properties that were automatically moved over to the RL from the RU. And I guess, I sort of, I try to find it, it's, you know, there's a lot of material to look at, but I didn't see why, why, why wouldn't we just keep it RU until they decide to develop it, just like everyone else, and then it automatically goes to RL? I didn't see that. And so I'd be concerned if there was a restriction and that we're changing RU to an RL if it restricted the homeowners. And that would include anyone, not just Lisa, but anyone that-
But you. But you also, right?
Not me. My property?
Yeah.
I think I'm RU still.
So I just stand on the search in the code, just sort of, and put it, see it in front of them, that talks about restoration of non-conforming uses is 80% of the appraised value. Again, that wouldn't prevent them from constructing a new outbuilding in that zone, as long as they met the requirements, which on a piece of property that large wouldn't be very restrictive. But if you're wondering what the code says right now, this is what it is.
Yeah, I just found that, and I found the process part, and non-conformity is fairly straightforward in terms of that capability to revise or to update. But I do want to point out just the philosophical thing about non-conformity in the zoning. This document that you're working on, we generally consider to have at least a 20-year threshold for land uses. And, you know, and the way that it often works, and really, I believe should work, is that you lay out the zoning, that way that you would like to see it develop 10, 20 years from now, not a year from now, or even five years from now. Economic circumstances change, the need change, the ownership changes, and creating a clear path for a person to develop the property in accordance with both the comprehensive plan and the zoning is what we're about here. A non-conforming use. We try to make it so that it doesn't unduly in any way impact the property owner who can carry out a use as it is, and can do it in perpetuity. But this also allows an easy transition to the ultimate use that the council would like to see for the property. Leaving that as kind of an island, six-acre island of RU in that area, doesn't probably reflect the kind of ultimate land use pattern we'd like to see, and it might create difficulty. Frankly, I don't think it hurts the property owner at all to do the change, but it does actually help the property owner in the long run by making the, making the process of moving forward to urbanization simpler and more straightforward.
Additionally, it should be noted that the entire land use system in Oregon is designed to try and have agricultural uses in the counties, and inside the cities, it's supposed to be urbanization. And so the rural zone in this city is designed like it's a holding zone. And eventually, the, all the rural areas in the city will yield to the residential low designation as we continue to urbanize. And so when we first evaluated the map to decide where we wanted to put the RL and the RU zones, we generally let sewer lead the way. And where sewer connections were available at the property, we thought that was more appropriate to call that RL rather than RU, because it had the opportunity to grow through the sewer expansion.
So, Matt, so that was, that's what was sort of determining factor, was the sewer? And sewer and water?
And water, yeah, sewer, water access. And then, of course, neighboring, you know, development as well played a role in that. Sewer and water were the leading forces.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to throw this out there real quick, Jim. So I'm just reading up under the accessory structures. It says right here, under exceptions, farm accessory buildings in the rural residential zones on lots over 2.5 acres are required. Would that apply here, or?
Certainly would.
Yeah, so at six acres, any of those, any of the 80% or any of the size requirements, none of that, none of that applies to your lot. And I'll just bring this back to the same argument that I brought in for the, or the same point with the church, was that, like you were saying, as far as, you know, things change later, it's a lot easier to take size standards down than it is to bring it, bring it back. I guess my point by that being, as long as the zoning works for what you're doing today and what you see yourself continually doing in the, in the future, having that zone the way that it is probably increases the value of it, if you ever decide to do something later, because it'd be very easy for somebody to look at that and say, hey, I could develop that into smaller, smaller lots, without having to go to the city and try to get a zoning, zoning change. So you're really, really looking at the value of your property, being in that zone is probably higher than if it was in the, in the zone that you're talking about moving it down, down to. So just, just another thought.
Well, and that, to me, just sounds like you're raising my property taxes, because now my value's gonna jack up, because now it's all these individual ability to have all these individual lots, which I don't ever plan to do.
No, so I'll let, I guess I'll let somebody else be on that. I do know they can't raise your property taxes over 3% per year. Zoning shouldn't necessarily, necessarily include that unless you're going from-
Let me ask a question, if I may. Man, do you have a farm deferral?
No, we do not have a farm deferral.
Why?
But with an unconditional use, so are neighbors going to complain if my goats are bellowing too much, and so it's an unconditional use, are we gonna have to get rid of the goats?
Well, no, not at all. But my question, if it was, if you were on farm deferral, that doesn't change by zoning. It, I mean, if it was zoned this way, it wouldn't change if you were on farm deferral.
Yeah, and we're not.
Okay. Something to consider.
All right. So Lisa, any other input before I move on?
No, thank you so much for your time. I sure appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'm hoping you're hearing the same message that I think I am, and that is that there is no reason you cannot continue to do what you're doing, including buildings and so forth, under the new zone. So we're gonna earmark this as, as we prepare to bring this to close, as one of the topics that was being challenged. So, and we can weigh on that when we have the vote at the end. Thank you. Other?
Mayor?
Yes?
This is Jordan Schwager. I have Chuck Sides on the phone. He is the owner of the property, and the church property, and he would like to speak in regards to your concerns. He told me on the phone just now, he would like to work with the city to resolve whatever concerns are on the church property. And if we could, yeah, I'll let him speak for himself. Will you hear him?
I would just so need, that's not gonna help or hurt the situation going tonight, I don't believe. So I just want to have him work with Kevin on that, if you would please. The council okay with that? override me if you would like to, council?
Mayor, this is Forrest, and I think that if we are still in public discussion, if somebody, if a constituent wants to speak for three minutes, I think that should be allowed.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our attorney keeps me honest, and I appreciate that. So yes, please let him speak.
Okay, Chuck, your turn to speak.
I'm willing to check, and I will cooperate with the committee, so apologize. We'll pick out hours next to you to talk to anybody you want to talk to.
I'm sorry, we can't on here.
Okay, he, let's see. Can he, can he just, if he's on just the phone, he can dial in on the number to get in and call in direct, and we can let him in that way. Okay, Chuck, let me, let me give you their number. We'll resolve this right now.
Okay. So while you're doing that, I'm gonna ask for, while you're transitioning, I will ask other others who would like to speak. Others who'd like to speak about anything pertaining to the upgrade of our land use planning code at all. Okay, so then I'm going to hold for this phone call that's coming in, hopefully to arise here pretty shortly. And council, I guess, this is on the agenda for approval during, or processing during our new business. I guess the question to you is, if you'd like to pull it up and make that decision now, as opposed to waiting for a new business, I didn't want you to make a motion shortly after I close the hearing, that is, to do that, that would allow us to process this while the folks are still waiting to hear our results. Otherwise, it would be on the agenda under new business or final deliberation or decision. Do we have that phone call yet?
Does not appear so yet.
Okay, so Forrest, would it be out of line if I closed the hearing, we start deliberating, and yet fall back and take that call when it comes in?
That would be fine. The record will reflect that, and that's fine.
You just have to reopen the public hearing prior to it, but that's easy enough.
Yeah.
Okay, so while we're waiting for the call, does council have comments, concerns, or questions of staff?
Sir?
Yes?
Okay, I've managed to conference call Mr. Sides. I believe he's there.
I'm here.
Okay, you're speaking to the city council. What is it you'd like to say, sir?
Yeah, I apologize. I should be there. We'll do anything we can to work, and I'll be happy to come down tomorrow or the next day and work with whatever staff member you want to clear up anything that we need to be doing.
Have you had those discussions to date with our city staff around the concerns we've had?
No, I have not.
That's been the problem. We've been trying to deal with for some time now. But I hear you, and I appreciate the comment. So I'm not sure we- I'm sorry?
I apologize. Well, at this time, is anyone on the council willing to take a vote to comply with the owner's requests?
comply with the owner's requests? And the church's request to own the property for residential and with the understanding that we will do everything we can to meet the city's requirements. And moving forward, I will be in charge of taking that effort forward. And you have my word that we would work with you to resolve whatever concerns you have. We will address them.
Once I close, once I close the hearing, that discussion will be incorporated in the overall discussion about the land code itself and the zoning within that code. So it'd be one piece of our major decision that we'll have here shortly. So appreciate your input. I think we understand where you're trying to go with this. And now we, as a council, need to process the information that we have received and work toward the decision. So thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
So before I close the hearing, are there any other comments from residences? Okay, hearing done, then I'm going to close the hearing and ask council if they have questions or comments or questions of matter, John or others. And the question I'm going to ask you eventually is, at what point do you want to make a vote on this and provide a vote? And think about how you would want to structure that vote, even though you've gotten some draft language provided to you, they could need to determine if there are changes to that proposal based upon what you heard tonight. So comments from council.
I'll go first and with an easy one. So this one's for Matt. So Matt, going back here, and first of all, I want to say thank you for the public for coming out and definitely you brought up some very good concerns. We know this document is a work in progress. I mean, obviously, we try to hit everything on it that we can. And I think planning commission for all the work they did on it, there's things that we don't always think of and there're probably going to be things that we're going to change as we, as we move forward, especially trying to change all this at once, right? But one of the questions that I have was on the residential. So we are going to, sorry, I had to backtrack here after looking through all this. Residential load density for the setbacks. Side yard, we have five feet. Typically, what I found, and I know what we are now and what I found in most cities, and I always like to conform kind of what, so everybody is kind of the same. But is your five feet for a single story, eight feet for a double? I don't, I don't see that in here.
I don't think that ever came up at the planning commission to have different setbacks for different stories of structures.
No, it did not. It never came up.
So would you say, though, that most city or that's a pretty, pretty normal setbacks that they have?
I wouldn't.
Yeah, normal? No, I've seen like staggered setbacks when you're talking about much, much bigger buildings or in downtown areas where you have staggered setbacks, but not with single family residential.
Albany, Sweet Home, I mean, unless they changed their zoning recently here, they're always five foot and then it's eight foot if you're, if you're two story and that's simple for fire setbacks, et cetera. So I guess that'd be, that'd be one that I'd bring up. Another one that I know we already went through once, but I'll bring it up again, which I know that we love, is accessory buildings. Our setback on that, I know we had a lot of conversations about it and we changed that code significantly, Matt. I'm sure you remember that.
Oh, yeah.
The 10 foot, the 10 foot setback on the side yard of those. Kind of really thinking about that, talking to a lot of people who are looking to build accessory structures, really looking at where they're going to, going to place these. That 10 foot setback, really, especially when you're five foot setback off your yard, look at size of lots, it really kind of throws those off. Is there, is there anywhere else that you can, you can think of that has a 10 foot setback off of an accessory structure or off of a single story structure? And if it somehow had a, had a room above it, I get that more in a residential zone. Can you think of anywhere else that has a setback like that?
No, that 10 foot setback was applied when we took it to city council. We had a more staggered setback for accessory structures when it was brought through the planning commission level because we figured that accessory structures could potentially have a lot more impacts to neighbors, like shops that would make noise or garages where you're working on cars and grinders and things like that. And so we did have a staggered setback as the height got bigger. When we took it to city council, the staggered setback idea gave way to instead just swapping it out for a 10 foot setback. And so.
Once we got over 1200 square.
I don't know of any place else that has a larger 10 foot setback for accessory structures than they would have for single family homes. No.
Okay. So typically, they're about the same? Is that, is that typical?
Sometimes less.
Okay.
It's less for a rear yard, of course, because you're going to have that sitting in your backyard. But for side yards, it's usually exactly the same.
Okay. Okay. So that's one thing I would definitely bring to city council is setting that off the same. Just really looking at, again, some people that I know who've brought it up to me is just that when we really start looking at their lot and where they're setting these off at, driveways going back, et cetera. If it was, if it was at least the same, it just matches up a lot better versus if I'm driving back on the side of my house, then I've got to jut over, not only get to my, you know, jut over to try to get into my, you know, structure in the back. It just really throws that off. And I just don't see, I know we talked about some fire issues with that. That's why we talked about 10 feet. I think we should look at possibly minus that down to at least match what these single, single family setbacks are. So that's, that's just my recommendation. But that was all I had, Jim. So.
So what are you proposing?
That we change the accessory buildings to, to match what the single family setbacks are. I would definitely look at doing a setback, five foot on single family, eight on two, two story structures. That's what we currently have now. So I would, I would look at doing that. I would probably recommend that also. It's just when you get two double story homes, there's only five feet there, they just get, they start to get really close together. You know, that eight, eight feet really kind of, kind of spaces them out. I mean, and we do have larger, larger lots. So I would probably recommend both of those, propose both of those. Five foot on single family homes, eight foot on two. Now, that wouldn't include if you had a bonus room in the trusses. This is a true two, two story home. And then matching the setbacks as far as your side yard goes to the single, single family home.
Okay. Matt, you got a note regarding that we can refer back to?
I'm taking notes and suggesting that's what you mean.
Yeah. Yeah. I just want, I just want to come back and summarize the proposals that we are receiving for changes so that we can address them at the end. Okay. Thanks, Scott. Good. Anything else, Scott?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Cowan, you got anything?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to, I wanted to allow Council Mcfee to finish up. But I guess to tag on to that, I was just curious, what, what is the drawback to not, of not making that larger like Scott's suggesting, the eight foot versus, if I see it correctly, is that the five foot? You're taking, say, take it from five to eight. Is that right, Scott?
I'm correct. Only on two, two story homes. And that's true two story homes, not a bonus, bonus room over the garage, you know, in the trusses. So a true two story home would be an eight foot, eight foot setback.
So basically giving it a little bit, just a little bit more room.
Room, exactly. And not only that, that aligns more with what our neighboring cities are actually doing, which is kind of nice, especially as a builder, is to look at it and kind of have an idea of where things should be. So every city's not totally different, you know, where we all kind of, in some ways, you know, align, especially when it, when it comes to setbacks. So.
Okay. So the question to Matt is then, what, do you, do you see concern with, with that suggestion?
No, I don't think John or I would have a concern with that. If Albany has that and we just double checked and they do indeed have that exact setback, then I don't see any reason why Millersburg couldn't either. So that would mean 16 feet between two, two story structures.
Okay.
The concern will probably come from the builders. Even though he's got 10,000 square foot lots, look at what builders are doing now with large houses on those lots consuming almost a full width such that this might make, might cause the need for some changes and how they're currently laying out houses on, on properties.
That's eight, eight, eight on both sides, correct?
Yep.
That would be. I'd just encourage RV parking between homes, which in Millersburg is a very good thing. Millersburg loves their RV parking.
But some of the newer lots with the larger houses, you can't do it.
So, so Jim, just to throw it out there, I actually just pulled it up. I love Google, right? Albany, Albany code here is setback on a, if your single story lot is five feet, two, two or more stories. Should throw that in there because we haven't had any three story homes, but is, is eight. So unless you go to a 5,000 square foot lot or less, then they start shrinking, shrinking down, which you do see that. But so, so that'd be, that'd be matching Albany. When I built Sweet Home, it was the same. As far as I know, Millersburg was the same. When we built there, that we were told that. I'm going to leave that there. So with, with that part of it, right?
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Scott, Albany is actually at 10 feet for multifamily.
Multifamily.
If you go to multifamily, yeah, it changes. Yeah. But this is just single, single home. Yeah.
You're just talking about the setback in the residential low and the rural zone?
So if I'm looking at, correct, yes, this would be your, basically your 10,000 square foot lots or, yeah, yeah, the smaller, smaller. Yeah.
Okay. Does any other council member have comments, questions or concerns?
Scott, just to clarify, were you wanting to match that with the accessory unit or the accessory dwellings?
Correct. Yes. And that would run under the, to me, it would run under whether it's a single story or a double story. We're not supposed to have really double, double stories. Doesn't really count. But so we would have basically a five foot setback off of a.
Shop or ADU.
Yeah, or whatever it is. Yeah. So, so everything, everything matches. So as far as a setback.
Okay. So you're talking about shrinking it two feet from 10 foot on the accessory dwelling to eight foot?
Five. Five if it's a single story, single story accessory building.
Okay.
That's what I wrote down, Scott. I'm with you.
I agree with you. I just wanted to clarify.
John, do you have any other thoughts or concerns?
No, not since I went part of the way through this with these guys.
You're part of the, you're part of the founding fathers.
Yeah. And we've got our trustee Connie on there. So I'm good.
Yeah. Of our 16 workshops, he was probably on 12 of them. So, yeah, he's very familiar with it.
Dave, you still there? Any comments?
Yeah. I mean, I'm still there. That's John's question was what I had. And I'm assuming that if it's an eight back, eight foot setback on a two story, the accessory dwelling is going to be the same, right, Scott? Is what you're meaning?
No, as long as it, so me the setback. So if the accessory building is a, I mean, if you want to do that, that's fine. But typically, it's if the accessory building is a single story building, then it'd be five, five, five feet. So your setbacks are if it's a single story building, whether it's a house, accessory building, whatever it is, then it's five. If the house is, or if the building is two stories, then it's, then it's eight. So.
It's based solely off the, the height, the one or two story, not, not on the residence itself.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. No, I'm good with pretty much everything else.
Okay. All right. Let's talk about process for a moment, please. First of all, in order to move this up, if you want to make a decision on it now versus half hour from now on our new business, I would need somebody to make a motion to recommend we do that, followed by a question about how we process it. So any thoughts on that? You want to leave it where it's at? You want to bring it forward?
Just count, I'm moved that we moved this forward now and it's on our minds and we have the folks on the phone and that we move forward with the decision.
Okay. I have a motion from Scott Cowan and a second. I think it's from John, wasn't it?
Yep.
Okay, got it. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I didn't use the hands, yes and no. So let's just do that. Motion carried. And I guess now we're all voting anyway. Okay, we got it. Thank you.
So councillor, mayor, if I could, maybe I'll just, well, go ahead if you had a thought on how to.
I'm trying to create, I'm trying to create what about how to process this. We have three or four different requests for change.
If I could, I'll just jump in and see if I can, I'll throw out what, where I am on it. It is, it sounds like the, and I didn't catch everyone's name and I apologize if I miss it. So I'll just describe the properties. There was, starting from the south side, there was some conversation about industrial and commercial and having a auxiliary or non-auxiliary home, but a resident staying on the home. Sounds like that's already, or on the site there. That sounds like that's already been resolved, that that would be acceptable through a conditional, you know, on that, on those properties. So I think that's already resolved on that one. So unless we have to address that, I don't think we do. I guess with the, Lisa's question about the property, it sounds like that, that doesn't really, is going to really affect the situation with the RU and RL. So I would say that, that part, leaving that as well as, I guess where I am on it is the, the church property, it just doesn't, it sounds like, I'm not ready to make a decision on that. So I guess that's, I just don't think we have enough information to make a decision on that to change from the commercial to the RL or even the RU. So with that said, I, I think, I think the only thing really I'm open for changes would be the, would be what Scott just brought up with the setbacks.
Let me stop you there and ask, Matt, has he captured every topic we discussed thus far?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Hey, let me jump in, Mr. Mayor. The discussion certainly was favorable to that caretaker dwelling, but it does need to be covered in the ultimate motion to indicate that council agrees with the proposed change.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Oh, yeah.
So what I'm hearing, Scott, if you, you didn't make a motion, did you?
I guess I don't. I just rambled on. I, I just trying to clarify. I think it'd probably be best that, yeah, have someone else draft, draft it up. That's where my head was though, was, was making the, what I explained was, was probably the setbacks. And then, of course, what, what John Morgan just said.
So, so what I, so what I would recommend is somebody go ahead and make a motion using what's been provided to us already as a draft and add to that draft, changes that you're approving, such as the setbacks and, and the, the acceptance of the person living on site. I'm lacking words there. Those being the two changes that you're, I think you're suggesting we approve. So I would suggest using the draft motion if you agree with that and add in those two caveats that you want included in the motion. That makes sense?
Mayor?
Yes, Kevin?
I'd like Forrest's input. What might be simplest for you to do is do a motion to those items that you would like to have staff include into the document and then just go move forward with the ordinance, knowing that you have directed us to do that. Forrest, does that make sense?
So I'm trying to understand what you're saying. So suggest a motion shown and then direction as to the two changes that they want to have made and we make those changes?
Yeah. I didn't know if it made sense to have them make a motion for adding the caretaker as a conditional use to the LI and GI and modify the setback, the five to eight, if they were to make a motion to, to include those changes and then move the motion with the changes that were, were added tonight.
I guess I'd ask John or Matt what their thinking is on that.
Yeah, I think, I think we're seeing Janelle pin them out as we speak, actually.
That might be helpful to put it up on the screen. So you're asking for a motion to add the caretaker facilities as a conditional use in the LI and GI zone and?
There were three. That was one of them.
The second one was to change the setbacks for accessory structures, five feet for one story and eight feet for two stories.
It's for all.
For all accessory structures in all zones.
Oh, for all structures.
Yeah, but I think it's two separate changes.
They're two separate changes. Yeah. And then the third change would be to change the setbacks in the RL and RU, the side setbacks, to five feet and eight feet for two stories. So I saw that as three distinct changes.
I agree. I agree with those three. Just procedurally, Forrest, hopefully you give some guidance. It would seem that a motion that would approve, I'm guessing, the first reading of the ordinance, with it, including the.
including the, those amendments would be all that would be needed, but you're the parliamentarian.
I, I, I like that process better to include those in the, in the initial reading. These changes.
That's what I was trying to do.
They're agreeing with you.
We're overworking this process.
Right, right. Keep it simple. Go for it. So now, so a question, Matt, on the setback change from five to eight, on the rural zone, so the R U, that is minimum two and a half acre lots. I think our setbacks there are 15 feet. So that's, that's a little different. I think I was more thinking along the.
Just R L.
Yeah, just the R L. Because rural, the R U is half acres and bigger. It doesn't, setbacks really don't, you know, at, at that point, 15 feet is nothing.
Okay, noted, got it. Just the R, R L zone, got it.
And I do the same thing. That should probably be in the R L, R L zone only because right now it'd at least apply the 10 foot for them. Or you could just say that we match it. I mean, I'd, I'd go for either of those, but um, you know, the 10, 10 foot when you get to two and a half acres isn't, isn't that big of a, big of a.
So for all those out there shaking their head at us, this has been a very long, complicated process. So bear with us.
I got one, one, one thing I might want to add just for people to think about because it's something I've experienced. The proposed changes on the, the general industrial and limited industrial. We're gonna say a caretaker facility, right? Not facilities. Because you know where I'm going with this, right?
Well, they're traditionally called units, not necessarily facilities. So a unit might be a better word for that, the caretaker unit.
Yeah, I, I've seen this go south real fast on a couple industrial properties and I, I personally, I don't, in general, in general industrial, I don't see them very often, to be honest with you. Limited, limited industrial here and there, but not general.
Yeah, I would definitely make it singular. And it also is, it's associated with an industrial use. In other words, someone couldn't do it unless there actually was an industrial use there and it was incorporated into that use.
Right. Just, just.
Yeah, we could write that language up easily.
Yeah, I just think it's sort of a slippery slope. That's, I'd, I'd agree with, with Dave was saying as well.
Yeah, definitely. Good, good point, Dave. So on the accessory structures setbacks, I make that R L, R L zones only, that it goes to five to eight.
What about the R M zone? The residential mixed density zone? That's our higher density zone that you see down in the south end of the city.
Did you still want? Yes, R M.
It's written in R M, it would be a 10 foot setback for accessory structures, which would really not make any sense on a 5,000 or 3,500 square foot lot. You probably want that to be five as well.
Correct. Yes, let's do R M, R M two. I think that's the one we were thinking of, not R U. So yes, yes, you're, you're absolutely right.
Very good.
Okay, so Janelle, Janelle has provided us a draft motion for approval. If you will, somebody would like to take this and run with it.
Well, let me add one more point of clarification. Where we're changing the setbacks in R L to be five feet on the side and then eight feet for a two story, did you want that same provision to apply to the R M zone? Probably not because the R M zone is much smaller lots and as you get a 3,500 square foot lot or 5,000 square foot lot, stepping back to eight feet might really play with your ability to cite homes on there.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. That's R M right there. It's 10.
That's R M right there.
Yeah, so it's, it's 10 feet. It's even larger. So let's go back to.
That needs to be changed.
Yeah, that needs, that's, that's too much.
Is that a typo or is what, where?
No, I, I think that that's probably, I think if you look at Albany for R M, their R M is, their R M is 10, 10 feet.
What?
For a single story. For two or more is 10 feet, but they've got notes on it. So the notes are except for single family homes attached to detached duplex, which must have a minimum setback of three feet for one story, five feet for two story. More than three. So the problem is you could end up with single family and multi, you know, or, you know, an apartment unit in it. So what we may want to do is, you know, rather than tonight, maybe we come back and we look, I don't think we're having anything take place right away in R M. I would suggest that we come back and, and have that as a, as an item for us to take a look at. I think we need to be careful what we do here. Single family or it could be a multifamily unit. We probably want to have some different standards for both and maybe we need to come back and address that.
It does seem weird though, it's 10 feet, but I, I agree. I think that's something we come back to. Just make sure we don't, you know, mess up.
The, so in, in Albany, it's, it's the minimum, but then there is two footnotes and it says except for single family homes attached to detached duplexes, it's three feet for one story, five for two story. So I think what they're doing is addressing. And then it says if it's more than three stories, it's 10 feet plus three for every story over three per unit requirement. So I think we may want to come back and look at that and we can split that out there for that zone.
So one thing to look at is, is Albany's calling their R M zone is 3,500 square foot lots at a minimum. Ours are five. So if we go up to Albany's 5,000 square foot lots, we're either an H M or R S five. So that's not even their R M. That'd be above that. And they're five foot for single story, six foot. So, yeah, so just throwing that out there. And then duplex, duplex, they're just saying it has to have a 7,000 square foot corner lot. So really if we just did five and six for those, we would, we would pretty much match.
Yeah, I, I think what we need to be careful with though is in Albany's R M and in, in our R M, it could be larger than that, but you could end up with three story apartments or something potentially on, on those in, in that zone. So I think we just need to take a little, I would, my preference is we take a closer look at that and that's one of the things we can do once we get back planning commission and then bring it forward for change.
Perfect. Look, if I may, Mr. Mayor, jump in procedurally. Uh, boy, you know, what, once you make the, 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 take the action on this tonight, it's set in stone. And certainly you can refer that matter back to the planning commission to review, but it, you know, by the time they go through the required hearings and everything, you wouldn't see it back for three or four months. So just be sure that.
Yeah, I think Kevin meant in the first batch of amendments to this plan down the road, this should be on our tickler list of things we should look at with our first batch of amendments. Is that what you meant, Kevin?
I don't think we're going to see, right now it's, it's five feet in the R M zone for interior, streets 10. So I, I don't, five feet isn't anything different than what we would have in the 10,000. So.
We don't right now have the opportunity to have any new development in our.
In R M zone.
Time to address this before there would be a need to actually implement it.
Right. That makes sense.
We'll let this one simmer.
Okay. Are we settled? We got a plan? We have a motion?
You take our M off.
Uh, yeah, no, it's there. That's for accessory.
On my mute button here. Okay, so I, I moved to approve ordinance 178-20 repealing all ordinances that compromise the land use development code, replacing them with a new Millersburg development code, adopting a new zoning map and a new comprehensive plan land use map and amending the comprehensive plan with proposed changes to development code text to add a single caretaker unit as a conditional use in L I and G I zones. Change side setbacks in the R L zone to five feet for single story and eight feet for two story structures and change side setbacks for accessory structures in R L and R N zones to five feet for single story and eight feet for two story structures.
Thanks, Scott.
That's what I heard.
Looking for a second.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion for Scott McPhee and a second from Dave. Any further discussion?
Forrest, read.
Go ahead and hearing them, please go ahead and vote using the yes and no buttons on your screen.
We need to read.
You need to read it?
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe Forrest needs to read the ordinance for our code.
He's probably remaining quiet. Yeah, I was just thinking, I'm not going to see anything. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Janelle. I heard you encourage that. Okay, so ordinance number 178-20, an ordinance repealing all ordinances that comprise land use development code, replacing them with a new Millersburg development code, adopting a new zoning map and a new comprehensive plan land use map and amending the comprehensive plan. Whereas the city of Millersburg, in an effort to provide for the welfare, safety and health of the citizens of Millersburg, has previously adopted a local land use development code and whereas following the city's incorporation in 1974, the city development code was adopted in 1976 and was slightly revised in 2001. And whereas over time, the city has evolved and the current code no longer contains proper rules and regulations for the changing nature of the city, such as rural and urban regulations existing in the same zone and imposition of limited commercial standards. And whereas the city's population exceeds 2,500, thus changing application to the city of some state of order rules, regulations and statutes. And whereas the city wishes to repeal the existing land use development code and associated ordinances and adopt in its entirety a new development code that accomplishes the goals and intents of applicable Oregon rules, regulations, statutes, the city's comprehensive plan and accurately reflects and adopts best practices across the state. And whereas the city is transitioning from a one map system for zoning to comprehensive plan and use designations to a two map system in order to allow greater flexibility for implementing development. And whereas the comprehensive plan, let me see, comprehensive plan, where'd that go? Oh, has also been revised to ensure consistency. New development code and the comprehensive plan. And whereas the new development code will create more predictable outcomes through clear standards and fully compliant with all state rules, regulations and statutes. And whereas on September 2nd, 2020, the Millersburg Planning Commission recommended to the Millersburg City Council, the city council approved repeal of the current land use development code and adoption of the proposed development code. Amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning map and the adoption of all, of an all new comprehensive plan map. And whereas the city convened a public open house on July 29th, 2019 and conducted 16 planning commission workshops, all of which were open to the public. And whereas the city residents were notified on August 6th, 2020 through a measure 56 compliant notification process. Development land conservation and development, D L C D received notice on June 6th, 2020, more than 35 days in advance of the planning commission hearing on September 2nd, 2020. And the county and all other required agencies received notice consistent with the urban planning area agreement, U P A A. Now therefore, the people of the city of Millersburg do ordain us call it section one. All of the following previously adopted ordinances that comprise the current development code are hereby repealed. 5974, 100, 102, 105, 121, 122, 146, 159, 170 and 171. Section two, the new development code as provided to the city council on October 13th, 2020 and reflecting all changes requested during the planning commission and city council hearings is hereby adopted and amended as shown in exhibit A. Section three, the new zoning map is provided to the county, city council on October 13th, 2020 and reflecting all changes requested during the planning commission and city council hearings is hereby adopted and amended as shown as exhibit B. Amendments to the comprehensive plan to reflect changes required by the new development code as provided to the city council on October 13th, 2020 and reflecting all changes requested during the planning commission and city council hearings are hereby adopted and amended as shown in exhibit C. The new comprehensive plan map as provided to the city council on October 13th, 2020 and reflecting all changes requested during the planning commission and city council hearings is hereby adopted as shown in exhibit D. A copy of the ordinance shall be filed with the office of the city recorder of the city of Millersburg. These changes shall be made in the Millersburg development code and comprehensive plan. The effective date of this ordinance shall be November 12th, 2020. The city council permits the city recorder to correct any scrupulous error in the development code and comprehensive plan without the need for a city council section. And then we have the pass by date. So that just brings up a point, talking about these exhibits, I don't have them right in front of me. Will those exhibits need to be amended to reflect the changes that were proposed in the ordinance? Okay.
John's shaken his head, no. I would think yes, at least the maps.
Well. We didn't change them out.
Well, through their action, they, they accepted several small changes to the zoning and the comprehensive plan map that happened since its first publication prior to the planning commission.
Well, that's true.
And I can fix those maps pretty quickly, but.
Yeah.
That's all I meant.
And we will need to add the, the language, the five feet, eight feet and the L I G I into the document.
Yeah, that was reflected in the motion. So I think that'll cover it.
Okay, so we'll just need to make sure that those, the attached exhibits accurately reflect the changes in the motion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let me ask a question if I may, Mr. Mayor. The findings of fact, Forrest, are those adequately reflected in the ordinance?
I believe so.
Okay.
What do you think?
Well, with all the whereas's?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I believe, I believe the whereas's are sufficient, in my opinion.
Okay.
But I'm just one person. Do you, do you feel they are sufficient, John?
Well, um, yeah, let's just get this adopted. No one's going to appeal it. Uh, we're in good shape. I might've gone into a little more detail, but that's okay.
Do you want to add any detail now? Any sufficient detail now?
No, because no one has standing to appeal this on that issue, that, that the findings aren't adequate. So I think we're fine.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the resolution read. We have a motion on the floor and a second. No need to change any of that, right? We're good. So council, go ahead and vote using your indicators again, please. I've got all five voting in favor. So this motion passed unanimously. Thank you so much to everybody who's make this happen. Uh, time for a party. Okay, thank you, John and Matt so much and staff.
And the planning commission.
Yes, well, we'll talk, I talked to Kevin briefly before the meeting. We do want to do something to recognize the planning commission for two years of hard work to get us where we are today. So we'll, we'll talk more about that later. Okay, moving on. Just, I missed something. It's time for council member or staff comments. Any comments from council on anything else?
Yeah, I'll just, Alan, I'll just say, I was going to say at the end, but I, I think it's probably pertinent now just with all the conversation we just did. But a huge thanks to the council or to the commissioners on the work as well as staff on a really well prepared and presented a document that's going to serve our community for a long time. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all the work.
Good, Scott. Me too. They've, they're tired, probably tired of hearing me say, but I watched this process from the very beginning. And if you looked, if you, some, Scott, you can, Scott, you can reflect on this and maybe some others as well, but you go back to our planning processes of four or five years ago and see how we have progressed with the support of current staff and how that whole process has evolved and using this process as a meeting to bring it together and work together has been pretty awesome to see this whole thing develop and evolve over time. We have a planning now that really works extremely well together and they challenge each other back and forth as need be, but this has been a vehicle to get us there along with the support from staff. So it's awesome to watch the process and see where we are today. So thank you to all.
Echoing that, I couldn't agree more, Mayor. It's just amazing process. It's really, really great work and great document.
Any other council staff or comments? I have one and that is that last night our events committee met visually to begin a process for designing a event for the city. You'll be seeing more about that. You're hearing more as we get closer. Jenny, who led the meeting, has a bunch of notes set down with Kevin, as you know, which has not happened yet, I don't believe, but they will be looking at and prioritizing, getting feedback and they'll create a plan, uh, which probably will include a parade for which we already have Santa and Mrs. Santa identified. I won't give their names just yet. There's all kinds of things like potentially, hopefully including a fundraiser with this process for folks in the canyon area who suffer from the fires. So several things out there to be discussed. It's very early, but you'll be hearing more as time goes on. Anything from staff? Okay, let's move into city manager report.
Yeah. So the first, first thing I just wanted to go over with you real, real briefly, Republic Services rate increase. They have sent a letter to us based on their calculated annual. Uh, Republic Services rate increase, um, they have sent a letter to us, uh, based on their calculated annual refuge rate. Effective January one, the adjustment would have been a point, that's actually point zero three. Or eight cents per residential. Customer per, per month, so they're not looking at an increase for twenty twenty one. They are requesting a fifteen dollar per occurrence contamination fee for recycling and yard cart debris. Per occurrence, so they've seen an increase, they stated on that. Um, and they would like to ask that be added to, um. To the rates in which they could charge. Um, they try to go out and give a warning first, it sounds like I'm talking with Julie. Um, but they do have some repeat offenders in both, uh. Throughout their service area and they would just like to have that. So if council is in agreement with that, my intent would be to, we would put that in form of resolution. And bring it back for either the October or. Uh, in November or December meeting, um, to approve that, that change to their. To their fees. So that's maybe what I'm looking for now is just as if you're willing to see that brought back and if so, we will bring that back.
I'm good with it.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm good with it, that's the standard rate.
So my only concern with that, and and I don't know if they do or not, but was reading through it, it's if the, if the, uh. Trash collector in the truck sees it in his video camera that there's a plastic bag that comes out of the trash, you know, out of the, out of dumpsters, he's dumping it, then, then, then they get fined. Is there recording of that with like date timestamps, GPS tracking? I just hate to be the fact that the driver can say that there was a trash, trash bag, therefore he gets, he gets, he gets charged for fifteen dollars. I think there needs to be a little more accountability in that.
From what I took from Julie is it wouldn't be on a first occurrence, this would be when, so if they see it, it sounded like they get a note. On the can or something along that line, and it's where they've seen multiple occurrences, so it wouldn't be just a, a, a one time. And it sounds like they're looking then to see if there's. Something there, so.
And and no, they don't have GPS that timestamps it and date stamps it, there's not a whole lot of people that do, um. You know, it, uh. It's a very common occurrence, I mean, people use it as their overflow garbage can, I I get it. Um, and and that's, that's the standard contamination fee. Uh, we wipe it off one or two times, but we keep notes on their accounts, Scott, and I think they do the same.
No, and that makes, that makes absolute sense, I guess my, my concern is just that they could, because I know we like to move our trash cans not up and down the street, but on either side, depending where cars are parked. You know, so just because a guy checks a box. Um, it says it happened at this house, um, somebody gets charged fifteen dollars, that's, that's just, that just seems a little, seems like there needs to be a little more accountability to that if they want to charge that fee. I totally get the reasoning the, behind it, I actually, I actually like it. I would just like to hear some, how, how the accountability is there to make sure that they're able to charge the right, the right person. That's it, so.
Just make sure your neighbors aren't putting it in front of your house.
Well, that's just it, see, that's what you run into, right, and it's, and it's, or it's, oh, I forgot, yeah, that's right, I saw that, check it off this house, and then you actually. The wrong house you're going down, I mean, things like that happen, and I just, there needs to be, to me, if we're gonna. Charge people fees and then cut off their garbage service, which they have to have, which is what they can do if somebody doesn't, doesn't pay it. We don't give them any other options to get the service from somewhere else. So that's why, to me, the accountability needs to, needs to be there. So however they do that. I probably sound like a stickler doing that, it's just.
I could go on for, I could go on for hours, so I'll just keep, keep my mouth closed.
Alright, I get it, I, I get, again, I agree with the fee, it's just some sort of accountability to make sure it goes to the correct, correct house.
Maybe, maybe they could write your cart number down. Well, seriously, I mean.
That works great, yeah.
I mean, you know. That, that's, that's an effective way of doing it, uh, we, we GPS stamp every stop, so. Um, and timestamp every stop, so they don't have the ability to do that, though. Yeah.
And that's all the two, I know, we, we do that here at my office for our guys, so it's not a complicated, you know, to, to GPS that. Um, so, yeah.
I think if that was to become an issue, then it'd be looked at then. Other than that, don't fight the mafia, Scott.
Well, that's, that's what I'm doing, I'm trying to, you know, if you got, when you don't give people other options. And the fact that they have to have garbage garbage service, right? And the fact that they're the only service provider to offer it, that's, that's where, to me, the accountability. Has to be from the, from the city as far as making them have that. Um, you know, it's kind of like, you know, if this isn't a, uh, this was an internet issue, you have other, other options, if, if you don't like the pro, provider, you, you just switch. We don't, we don't give that, that option, so the accountability needs to be.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so any other? Thoughts regarding this doc before we move forward? So Kevin, you heard that we're okay with it?
Yeah, I will, uh, we'll bring it forward next, uh, probably next month.
Okay.
Oh, and Kevin, if we could get, I mean, if a representative maybe could be on to answer those questions would be awesome too, I mean, if you could get the answer, that'd be great, but. If, if they would like to come there once, once a year, would be.
We can, uh, we'll ask Julie if she can be here, I, I think what John said is correct. Uh, talking with Julie, it sounds like we get at least a couple warnings before they get the, uh. The charge, so. You know, just come out and do it the first time it's in there, it sounds like it's usually. Once or twice usually before, and they know pretty much who the repeat offenders are. Um, and it sounds like the, and that's what they're trying to address, is they have repeat offenders and that's who they're trying, they need some teeth to address it.
I guess, I guess, Scott, Scott, let me push back a bit, do we really need to bring Julie in and beat her up every time, I mean, it's like an annual event. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry, and do we need to really bring her in for this?
I, I personally have multiple feelings on that, I mean, so my, my, my first thought on that is this question here, um, she could answer that hopefully. Um, but she's not on here, um, if I had a monopoly contract with a, with a city.
Hey, hey, it's not a monopoly, it's a franchise.
No, it's a franchise, okay, so monopoly, what I mean by that is there's one service pro, provider, they can't go somewhere else, they can at least come and answer questions for fifteen minutes, I mean, that's, that's it, so.
I happen to agree with Scott on this, it's not asking too much.
Okay.
Especially if I can't charge them for dumping garbage on the ground and not picking it up.
Yeah, there you go.
Alright, here we go again, okay. Uh, anything else on this topic? Go ahead, Kevin, keep, what else you got?
Alright, uh, just wanted, one of the things we talked about when we did the work session, we would bring certain policies to you and we'd also make you aware. Um, with the introduction of our new, um, employee manual, have a couple of policies that we're bringing forward and they just want to make you aware, one is recovery of overpayment to employees. Uh, one, I think that's in is how we address if we don't, uh, if we don't pay. Um, but we have had some situations where, uh, there was a error made and an over, uh, payment to an employee, we. Put together a policy on how that will be handled so that the city is reimbursed. And then also use of electronic devices. Um, if any of you want to see those policies, I'd be more than happy to share them with you, but, uh, from this on the conversation we had, that those type of policies, we would just implement, uh. That way, I wanted to make you aware of those two policies. Um, those two that we're going to be implementing. On it, uh, some, a couple of project updates, uh, there'll be a planning commission public hearing on, uh. It's potential expansion for Pratt and Coop, that's gonna be on the twenty second, that is not their normal meeting night, uh, due to conflicts. Matt has, so that's actually on a Thursday instead of the Tuesday. Um, and commission was, uh. Contacted about that date and that date would work for them. Janelle, do you want to add anything to that? I'll let Janelle talk about, uh, the fire station, where we're at. Um, on a couple of designs, some design stuff, uh, that we have, you've seen some of it, but there's some new stuff here too, we just wanted to get some feedback from you.
So we're getting toward the end of the schematic design phase, if that means anything to you, it's about thirty percent level design. Um, we'll be getting to the middle on that next week, uh, I believe. Um, the drawings that here you have seen, I believe you saw last month. Um, we just included them again, the site plan, floor plan, exterior, uh, rendering. Of the proposed building, and these have been posted on our website, I don't believe we've received any public comments on them, but. Have been out there for viewing. Back to the presentation. What is new and, um, we wanted to get your feedback on tonight is some interior design concepts. So the architect has provided. Um, some photos just for concept of, um. What we like the look of, not, this is not, these are not specific colors themselves or materials, but just to get an overall feel for the interior. So they, um, provide some contrasting. Uh, types of lobby entrances and, uh. Ideas for the day room. Please, hang on a second there, computer, please. Um, these, these photos have been passed along to Albany Fire and they have received some feedback from their staff, so. Um, this is mostly about how their living spaces will work, so we do want to make sure we have their input, but. The, uh, meeting room is also in here, and I'll scroll to the end and get some. Options of meeting rooms, we also discussed the meeting room here at city hall and, um, what it looks like, but. Wanted to find out if council has any specific feedback you would like to share on this tonight, or you can send it to, to me. Separately, but we do need to get that back to them in the next few days, at least so they can move forward with. Having an idea of what direction we want to go on the, on the interiors. Are there any comments or anything you'd like to share at this point?
No, I, I give Scott Cowan my vote to use as he sees necessary.
Alright, I think, Mayor. But you know, it would be good just to get, get some feedback, what, what the council sort of likes or doesn't like, um. You know, the, and, you know, it's, uh, the floor, floor coverings is a big, you know, topic of, you know, high use areas and. Um, you know, do we have, do we have a lot of, uh, like the photo there, the, the more, you know, really. The whites and the, the wood color, or do we do go to a splash of color? You know, so. Just trying to get a feel from the council, but if, if not, then, you know, we can work in our small subgroup, you know, of, of getting that toned down, but. You know, obviously, you would love to have input from the council if, if, if you have that.
Well, Scott, I would think this is something that the farmer themselves should weigh in on more than us in terms of what it's functionality and looks. And, and you've got that feedback, right?
Yeah, that, that is correct, they, they've had the opportunity to do that and they'll have more opportunity to, to chime in at that. The, the one thing to be aware of, uh, for the councils, that we are really focused on low maintenance. Um, you know, doing it right the first time versus trying to, you know, go after the fact and, you know, put things in that, that we recognize, so. You know, on the front side, this might have some, uh, costs. But in the long run, I think the long run will be that we'll have a really well functioning fire station. That's, uh, low maintenance and, uh, and is going to last a really long time, so. So I do, we are getting good input from the firefighters as well.
A, a, a prime example of that, that we have heard, for an example. Uh, when Station Eleven was built, it sounds like they had to cut some corners, um, I think part of it was the architects. That they selected and, and some things that probably weren't handled correctly, but. Looking, this is the kitchen at Station Eleven, for an example, and why they did this, and. I have no idea, but it sounds like in order probably to save costs. They allowed particle board to be used for the cabinet construction. Which doesn't go well with wet surface areas and, and steam, and they're having some delamination issues already, it sounds like. Um, you know, so that's one of the things we'd already talked with the architects. About is, you know, we're not going to want that, we want plywood, you know, we want things well built, because. Uh. And the skin on it doesn't necessarily hide what's. We have underneath it structurally, so there's a number of things that, as, as Councilor Cowan mentioned, that I think is important as we look at. It may cause some cost increases at the initial, but we will have savings long term. If we do it right versus trying to cut corners in some areas if we don't need to.
We'll end up paying for those kinds of things in the long run, so.
Two folds usually.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the. We didn't, we haven't yet gotten into the discussion of the specific materials, there's been some discussion on concrete floors versus other floors, but really, that, we're pretty high level at this point still, like. What kind of overall look do we want, and then we will get into all those details, uh, in the design for their, uh, papers.
And part of the exterior will drive some of the interior too.
I'm glad you brought that, that's a perfect segue, Kevin, uh, and that's, that goes as well as the exterior too, right, we're, we're not, we're not done with decisions on that, because there's definitely. Um, there's definitely a few questions and some information I wanted on, uh. The door choices specifically, uh, the panels, I, a couple of questions as well, but. Uh, so we're, we're still kind of waiting to get all that information correct.
The, the exterior, I think for, as far as the building itself, if we're talking about the overhead doors and, and the other doors, I think, yes, I don't know that we are, but. We are to a point where we need to be making those. It's just right now, the overhead doors intent is to look at having as a bid alternate. Your standard overhead doors versus what they call the fourfold. Doors, which are those.
As we discussed in the previous meeting, this isn't actually what we would, our concept of what they would look like, um. The design would look a little different, but, um, the overall materials, the, the paneling and the roof, you know, structure and materials. Those are things that we feel are pretty cut and stone now, pretty solid at least. Um, colors, of course, can change, um, at this point, that, you know, we can, look at any options on that, but. A significant change to say, we don't want this kind of exterior paneling, we want something completely different, you know, at this point, we hope we're past those. Uh, decisions, but if we need to revisit, we certainly can, just as early as possible in the, in the process. Uh, will save us money longer, and details like, you know, the man doors or person doors, whatever. Windows, you know, those details, I know. It all the time. In the generic sense, I mean, or, um, you know, those details, no, they're not, they're not finalized for anybody.
That's, uh, my, mine mainly come down to the doors. Um, because I know that there's, from what I'm being told from a few phone calls and some people I've talked to, there's. Could be a very significant difference in doors, and so I want to make sure that we're definitely looking at. Functionality, um, obviously maintenance is an issue too, um, aesthetics as well, but, uh. Not, not overvaluing any one above the other.
Councilor, are you referring to the bay doors or all the doors in general?
Uh, just the bay doors, um, that, those are, those are the ones that, um. Only because I have a little bit of experience in some doors, and I, I remember hearing that. Um, some are more expensive than others, and I actually got the number quoted to me, and I don't want, I just want to see if we can get a better deal once we get those numbers, because. If it's the same number, it's, it's quite, it's quite a, quite a bit.
Yeah, I can tell you that, uh, the, the four, fourfold doors are going to be more expensive than a standard overhead door. Um, I sent an email out, I don't know if everyone has seen it, but it includes a link and it has information, but. Long term, uh, most users of it, most facilities that have it will tell you that the overhead doors. Um, versus a bifold are a much higher. Um, I can tell you in my thirty seven years, the, the item that we had the largest failure on and probably the most expense, ongoing expense with, was always the overhead doors. A, a standard overhead door. Um, unfortunately, uh, the number, I can't tell you how many times we had to replace lower panels. Uh, due to, uh, objects striking it, either we're going up or coming down. Um, on there or track issues and, and things, so just, just a lot of, uh. Maintenance issues, but those are all the things we'll need to take into, to consideration.
And, and the.
Price difference yet?
No, and the reason, so we've talked with the architects a fair bit about this from the beginning, actually, and their recommendation, I mean, we've seen some numbers. You know, it's a big difference, can be, but their recommendation was, let's make this a bid alternate, because it's a very simple one to do and get the real prices from the contractors. Who are going to get the best prices on it, not, you know, not take the number from the person who wants to sell it to you, um, but. And make your decision at that point based on what the bids actually come in on, and that, that'll be then a decision for you as council, is a. Do you, do you want to pay whatever that upcharge is for these doors with these pros and cons, or go with the base bid, which would be. The standard roll of doors, so it's not a decision that has to be made now and based on their. Um, based on the, the feedback that we're getting and the advice, it seems that it's something that, if we want to consider, it's us to get actual bids on it and consider it at that point.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I want to confirm, and I only want to confirm just because the, the talk I had, and the couple of different talks I had. Um, and once I heard the number, it was one of the things where it turned into, uh, thirty minute talk turned into like a two, three hour talk, because I about fell out of my chair. So. I just, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not there quite yet, because it was a very. So I just I just I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not there quite yet, because it was a very extensive talk with the door installer.
Yeah, the, one of the things that I would just mention that a lot of people don't realize, and it's not that big of a deal on a residential structure, but when you're dealing with an emergency operation structure, it does become a big deal. Um and, you know, especially as a deal that we have one bay here that's not drive-through, the other, you know, two of the bays we will have that you could go out, you know, you may have to move stuff around, but you can go out a back way if you had to. Um but when you get a spring break, um it doesn't matter, we have an emergency release, that door is not coming up um on it, and I can tell you a number of situations where we had springs break and we had vehicles stuck behind a door and couldn't get out on an emergency. Um so those are just things that we need to to take in into consideration. Some, you know, I think there's things that you can look at, but those are all just things that, you know, most most uh of us generally don't think of of as an as an issue, and depending on it, sometimes they can get in and get them repaired fairly quick. Uh I've seen doors out of service for some time. As they get older, I'm trying to get the parts for them and stuff, you end up having to just replace the the door, so. Those are all the things we can look at and talk about at that point.
Sounds good. Does Councilor Harms, is you, do you have any other, other than the door conference, is there anything else that has come up in conversation? Maybe we could do research or look into further on.
No, just I'm I'm not joking. When I I talked to the guy, made the phone call, I thought it was going to be about a thirty-minute phone call. I just wanted to kind of, you know, get my research done.
Yeah.
Professional and knows, and then as soon as I, we got into it and I heard a few things, I I was like, okay, well, this is not
Okay.
You know, I thought. So I uh we spent all the time talking about that. I'm not gonna lie, that's all we talked about. So.
All right.
I'm I'm good with everything else. I mean, um ACN panels, I, you know, I'm I'm not real familiar with them, but I know a a couple of projects, there's some friends of mine that use them. I think they're they're great. They're a great alternative for the tin, um a longer life, they don't dent, all that good stuff. So I I think it's a timeless deal. Uh mainly, just like I said, I've only spent the majority of the time looking at that, because I asked all these questions that that uh Kevin's talking about, and some similar answers, some very, very different answers. So um we'll just, someone want to make sure we're not past the point of discussion, because it's going to be one of the things where um you know, some of that, if someone else didn't some information, you know, just looking around for some information, it could be the same uh response I had, and it caught you, catch you off-guard, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it will, as we said, it'd be a bid alternate, so.
Is there any other feedback on the fire station project?
No, I have the same concerns with it Dave had on the doors.
Yeah, I'd I'd have third that, and I had a couple other actually quick ones off of the exterior side of it, um if everybody's ready for that.
Let me go back to Dave's comment first. Dave, would you consider us having a one-on-one or a one-on-two conversation with uh Kevin and Janelle about the door concern? Maybe you ask me. You're not, you're being pretty coy about what you're sharing. You want to give them more detail?
Absolutely. I I would probably bring the guy I talked to, because he's in the business and he does a lot of fire stations in the valley. Um and then a lot of, a lot of his concerns, I, that's why it turned into such a long conversation. I'm going, well, yeah, that could, you know, and he's the one that's repairing them and installing them, so. Just just something to consider, and and it's all stuff that needs to be brought up, because I don't know at this point, I don't design fire stations.
Was he um installing overhead doors or the full four, uh full four, four-fold or both?
No, he he only installs overhead doors, but he doesn't even uh, I I asked him, I was like, do you do many fire stations? Like, I try not to, I just try to uh I just get called on the maintenance of them. Um and so he did say that there's only, I think, a very small handful of manufacturers with these particular doors, and they're all, they're all um, they all seem to be sold as fire station doors. Um but again, I I think it's probably a good conversation one-on-one for the reasons being, um the damage to the doors, um like, I don't these might be faster opening, but I think ultimately, in my mind, if you're going to hit a door, you're going to hit a door because it's just not paying attention. Um and so if you hit these doors, it gets considerably more expensive to replace sections of them from what I was told. Um three or four, five times more um than replacing a section. And then if you damage to the tracking system, it's a, it's a, it's even more so. Um and I think the things, I don't know if you want to get into all this, but it was, like I said, there's a lot of information shared in a few hours. Um so to me, it started making me scratch my head and go, okay, great alternative, but I really wanted to see the numbers that he, I was, we were discussing as far as what the expense was. Um I was hoping that they're wrong, so I wanted to wait and see if maybe these architects can get them at a better deal, or or whatever that may be. Or then or then have the deeper discussion on, hey, is this really, really the route we want to go?
Well, and when, if we get to that point, uh we also have a a station that just recently, uh Harrisburg has these, has the four-four uh four-fold or bi-fold doors they just installed, so that would be someone we could look at, and one of the local uh builders who we know very well was involved. Um that was, that building was built by GVC Construction, so that's another resource we can talk to and kind of see what their thoughts were on.
Perfect. Yeah, I just I just want to make sure, again, it's it's um it's something we discuss first, because and 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 we get into pricing, because it it just, it's such a huge, it's a huge adder from what I'm, what I'm seeing. I'm huge, ten times more.
Cool, wow.
Okay, Scott, go ahead.
I just, yeah, oh, you mean McPhee?
Scott McPhee was going to talk about outside the exterior.
Yeah, I got a couple of different items. Um probably as big as what, you know, a little easier what Dave was, Dave was talking about there, but I totally agree with what he's saying. Um that being said, if we look at the, which you already got it up, the north and south elevation there. So to me, when we, the front of this building is going to be going up Old Salem or Salem Avenue and looking at the building down, because once everything, the commercial side builds out, most people are going to really see this building when they head up, when they're heading north on Salem Salem Avenue. Yep, just right, right there, which is where we want to do like the glass, glass, glass front, roll-up doors, everything else. So the concern I had was if you go back to the um to the south elevation there, exactly. Um so having shed roofs are great, they 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 look great, but my one concern is these are very large shed roofs. In fact, I calculated the, and I don't know what the pitch of them is going to be, but I figured these things are about a hundred and seventeen feet over those, over those bays of panels. When you look at that south elevation there, all that white up on top, I'm assuming it's going to be white, that's actually roof. So my concern there is, is when you look at this thing from what we're going to see as the front, I'm going to see more roof than I am actual, actual building. So if we go to the north elevation there, you see mostly um mostly walls of the actual, the actual building. So we're showing off more of our ACM panels, whatever, whatever panels, panels that we use there. To me, that's the more appealing side. Um and kind of have that reversed to where the roof kind of takes over the building. Um to me, the the shed, the shed roof should be re-reversed to where the, it's a pitch low down on the backside of it. Um so on the north side there, so it's basically take that, take that thing, flip it.
So the primary reason for that was for the potential for solar, because we flipped it. Um talking with uh Energy Trust and others, our potential, if we want to go with solar, it's kind of similar to the City Hall. It's virtually impossible to get any solar benefit. Um so if we don't want to look at solar, um and we don't think we ever want solar on there, uh that's an option, but that was the primary purpose for doing that. Um I don't know that they have set the pitch on it yet. I'm not sure how much you will.
It's all modeled, so this is all.
This is what you'll see. What is what you'll see?
This is, now you're seeing it from artificial angles in all of these pictures, because you're never going to see it straight on exactly like this. And this view is from much higher than you'll actually see it on Old Salem Road. It's not going to sit down that much lower than Old Salem Road. But a little bit, but but you're right, and and that's something that the roof is something that was discussed from day one as far as which direction it should slope and what the views are going to be like. So um yeah, I mean, I totally understand what you're saying. Um it it's always possible to make a change, but that's a significant change to the the building if we, if that's the way you want to go, and it would not be conducive to solar like was originally planned.
So so then actually, as I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying there is typically, when you look at the front of a building, you don't see solar, solar panels a a attached to, they try to hide those within, within a reason, right? Usually from the side, on the back, whatever it is, you don't typically see them on the, on the uh front. So not only am I going to see more roof than I am building, um because I'm going to see a hundred and seventeen feet of roofing running out roughly, um which is way higher than the obvious, obviously the building, but then I'm going to have solar, solar panels attached on there too. So it's just not going to be, I'm afraid, you know, I I agree, I'm solar, solar's great, we could argue that all day. Um but that's maybe not the most appealing, you know, so maybe there's another way that we could, we could, we could look at that. To me, the backside of that building is a lot more a a appealing for a couple million dollar structure.
I guess, I guess my my concern here, Scott, is this was something we brought up early on in the design and and said, is this something that, you know, we asked if everyone was comfortable with, because, and we've talked about the disadvantages, the way City Hall is now. My concern is if we go to the architects now and tell them that that we're changing this, this is going to put it back, and um they've started design based on the approvals that we heard from you pre, from the council previously on on this.
Well, that makes, I totally get, I guess I didn't, I didn't catch that. I think where I was, I was, I was, I was looking more at a thirty thousand foot level, hadn't quite looked at at this part of it. Seeing these, I see that. Um it'd be interesting to talk to them, how much they'd really change it, because I'm not so sure that it changed the building that much, because I'm just taking the roof and then looking at. So they're not covering anything up there as far as um extra, extra rooms or anything as far as that uh that that clear, clearer span that they're getting off the back end of it. I don't think it'd take as much as we think to be able to be able to, so.
So Scott, I can speak from having done these designs and worked with project teams on them. Um doing it at this point is a lot less of a change than doing it ninety percent. But doing it now is a lot more of a change than it would have been at um, you know, the beginning of the phase of design, because they have modeled this, they have built the walls, they've built the roof structure, not through all the details. So uh it's, it's always possible to make a change at any stage, it's just there are costs and schedule implications. So if this is something that council wants to pursue, we would need to go to the architects and say, what's the impact this point? Is this a change to our contract with you? Is it going to impact the schedule? Is there going to be a change order to the cost? I don't know the answer. It may be okay, um because I haven't seen the interiors of their models, but but when they're they're sketching the concepts up front, yeah, it's easy to flip them. Once they start building models, it takes a little more work, so. Uh I don't know the answer to exactly where they are right now, but they've been pushing ahead because we've given them, we have certain milestones and certain things we've been trying to nail down along the way, and the roof structure was one at the very beginning that we, yes, we're going with this. So again, it can be changed, and that's what we need from you guys. If that's important to you, we can find out what it would take.
And we just need to know, we need to know that tonight, though.
Yeah.
Head on that, does anybody?
What's that, Scott?
I said, where's everybody else's head on that? That's just what I'm seeing from the two different sides here. I I realize we're doing it for solar exposure, but architecturally, it's it's, I'm seeing more roof, roof than I am, than I am building by by far.
Not from the south elevation, which is the, the south elevation is the front of the building.
Correct.
I don't see the problem. If I'm looking at it from the north to the south, yeah, I can see the big, the big sloping roof, but um I don't know, I I think it's a late, we should have discussed this too much ago.
Well, I guess, again, we were looking at a lot of different plans at that point. I guess I didn't realize we were this, this far. To me, flipping it should be pretty easy, but that being, that being said, um so what you're seeing there is on the south elevation, all that, all that white going up, up at the top, that's actually, that's actually roof going up there, which is taking up a significant portion of the front of your, front of your building. To me, the architecturally pleasing part, the part that makes it more, more stand out is your, is your north side there. You have those little windows over the bay doors, things along those lines that are running. So we originally had that plan, right?
So. No, no, we'll go back. Now was the one you said you didn't like.
That was what you originally, before we mirrored it to move the bays to the west side, that was what you guys were looking at.
So this is when we first had the conversation about the the roof and whether we slope to the south or to the north, and what we received was even to the south, it gives us the solar option in the future if we want to. So this was clear back in August when we got that feedback from council, and we told them move forward with the opposite. Um we talked about the pros and cons at that meeting about City Hall's going from from north to um
Looping the other.
Looping the opposite direction um on it. So it's been since August that they have been moving forward with this design. And like Janelle said, if if this is, you know, if council wants to, we just, we need to make it, and we need to let them know ASAP. That's going to be, if you want to change that to the other concept.
Oh, I I personally don't support it, but I guess I need to hear from John, Scott, and Dave as well.
Hey Kevin, this is Cowan. You know, the the roof, I was, I I think I was down in California or somewhere when the council, actually, you guys had this meeting about the roof line, but I remember early on, we talked about it, and they, the feeling was that there, they they said that the the roof line would not be as as visible as as it sort of stands out in that um direct photo that that we saw earlier. Um yeah, that other one, that one, yeah, but um it do, I remembered that this architect has capabilities of seeing, using a three-D sort of uh visual, um they, you know, of the uh building from the street side to be able to look at it and maybe even give a perspective, so we could see what we're really looking at, or do they have that?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, so what you're seeing right now is a three-D rendering of the outside from the site perspective, and what you don't see in this is is the perspective if you were standing down here. And yes, we can get some, some um, we can have them do that. Uh we could also have them kind of, I don't think they have a person they can give us to spin around, but they can do it in their model and kind of move it around and let you see it from different angles. Um we could ask them to, you know, put a, do it from this perspective of standing on the sidewalk or whatever. I think part of the point goes, you know, on Old Salem, you will be up a little bit higher, you'll be looking down at it, not this much.
So that would. It'd be good to see the perspective from Old Salem. I mean, obviously, this photo is, you're from an airplane or something, you know, but.
Right. So we can ask them to do a little more um work on providing some graphics, if that would be helpful to visualize what it'll look like. But again, this is an artificial angle, and this is really an artificial angle too, but this is closer to what you would see standing at a ground level. Um a rendering like this straight on doesn't, you can, don't see the depth and the texture as much as.
Yeah.
Missing all the stuff in front that will break it up as well.
So and maybe to help it, uh keep it in perspective, those overhead doors are on the front of fourteen feet, so you're probably to the roof line there, that front roof line, you're probably seventeen feet. You're going to have a fairly tall, you know, it's going to be it's, you know, graphical, graphically, um the overhead doors are are fourteen-foot doors. So to kind of help with that in per, I don't know if that helps you perspective-wise on what you would, what you're going to be seeing from from the ground. I I don't think, you know, unless you're standing you know, from the street, I don't think you're even going to see, I don't think you'd see the whole roof.
Yeah, if you're standing at street level, it's probably, if we look back to this one, because it's a little closer angle, you probably, you're not going to see that big expanse of the roof, you might see a little bit of it, but from up above in different angles, you'll see more. Um that's true.
I see what Scott's saying for sure. Uh it it's definitely more aesthetically pleasing and less noticeable in this view that we originally saw, a hundred percent. Um the the other one, yeah, when you start looking at that and thinking about it, it does look like a lot of roof, so I, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I I can see Scott's point, and then looking at this original conception, um it's definitely not as obvious as this.
So I guess one of the first questions is, because we don't have a lot of space on here to put solar anywhere else, so without taking out potential use, other uses on the site. Um so I guess the first question is, is there an interest in in having solar, potentially having it? Um so that would be one of the the first question, you know, that would be one of the first things, because if there's not an interest in in exploring solar on it, um then that, we take that out of the equation. Talking with the mini solar that would go on, there would be a low um lower profile on it um on there, so.
So we can, I can, we can ask them if they can give us, you know, take what they've done here and give us some different. So we can, I can, we can ask them if they can give us, you know, take what they've done here and give us some different views of it for more of a realistic advantage point. And get those out to you so you can, um, maybe take a look at that and see if you still have the same concerns. And then if you want us to, we can, um, we can ask them about what it would take to make a change to the roof. Um, if, if solar is not a consideration you want to keep on the table.
See, I mean, the, the solar, to me, there's lots of different options. We could put that out in a field if we ever, ever wanted it. There's other options there. But I just, I just Google searched here, you know, shed roof, commercial buildings. Then I Google searched shed roof fires, fires, fire stations. Cause I was, I was sitting here thinking of when have I ever seen a shed roof face down to the front? Um, and I've, I haven't seen that. I'm not saying it's not out there, but I've never seen it. I pulled up on Google and I see a fire station in Seattle. I see lots of different buildings. The shed roof always goes down towards the, towards back because you're, you want to show off the front of the building. You don't want to show off, show off the roof. That's probably shed, shed roofs. It makes those roofs very, very long and they're very noticeable. So I just throw that out to anybody out there is, is, you know, one of the big things to do is that, you know, I like to Google, Google search this stuff. Look at what buildings are actually out there. And that's just not the way that they typically build them. I mean, I, I, at least that I'm seeing and I've seen out there. And there's a reason behind that. 117 feet pitched up, there's a lot there. There's, that's, that's a lot of roof. So you have a large gutter to take 117 feet roughly of, of water based off the, and based off the end of that, into that too. I understand the commer, the solar panel side of it, but there is some cosmetic archi, archi, architectural parts of that and parts of that. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up before. I guess the other, the other view I was more looking at, do we want a shed versus a hip versus, you know, gabled or what do we, what do we want, right? So, so those were, those were, I guess were mine. It just didn't, didn't, didn't really show it at this point. So.
And I, you know, I think that's fair. I think that's, that's, that's okay, Scott. Um, and I think, uh, you know, these are, these are the kind of things that I'd, I would prefer, like you said at the beginning, you know, we wouldn't be spending a lot of money on this building. So it, I'd rather us make, if, if make the change now, if that's what it, and, and I, I do see what your point is. I totally do. And, um, and, and I, I'd be curious about, you know, uh, what, what it would take to, to switch it. I think, I think the, uh, the solar thing, I guess just on my end is, um, it's nice to have that option. I sort of feel like, and, and I don't know, maybe I'm off on this, but I feel like if, well, if we don't do it with the building, we're probably never going to do it. Um, but you know, I, I hope I'm wrong on that, but like you said, there's other options of the field or whatever, or it's just a building that we don't put solar on. But, um, I do think the, you know, the, the look is different. You know, if you look at it like this, this photo now and consider that the front, yeah, it's definitely architecturally, um, you know, different than the other foot that we're seeing. And it's hard to say because of distancing, you know, of just where, with the perspective of that you're seeing. Um, but, but I, I, I think it's a fair question. I think it needs to be looked at.
Well, do you have a back for solar on this facility? We have it as a consideration.
Okay. At a minimum, the plan was to put in the ability to, um, put solar panels on later. And I have to look back at my notes with Energy Trust, but I think there were incentives to do that, to make it solar ready.
Yeah.
So we didn't necessarily plan to install the solar at this point, but to make it solar ready.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't know. That's good. Yeah.
And I think we should do that. One of the things you can, you can get a, a little bit of perspective maybe on that could kind of help us. So looking at this north elevation, if you look at that west elevation presentation, if you were to figure, you were to go out and, uh, look at from a street level, um, you know, even if you were across the street, I'm not sure you're going to see a lot of roof if you were to go to the, you know, from that standpoint, I don't know if that helps the perspective. I think that kind of gives us a little bit better idea of what you may see. It gives a different perspective than what we see when we're looking on where it looks like you're looking, as you're seeing is that whole roof.
Most people are just looking from Salem, Salem Avenue, right? Driving, driving north.
Would, would you like us to have the architect do some views? I, I think that should be fairly easy for them to do. Um, like this, but from the correct.
Elevation.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, no, definitely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that'd be fan, fantastic. But again, I think we bear in mind that most people, most of the taxpayers that are paying for this, are wanting to be on Salem Avenue and going to be seeing it at the advantage, advantage point.
So it's going to be, I would, I, yeah, it's going to be pointed, you're going to see it from both directions on Salem Avenue. Keep in mind, you're going to see the front and the back of it. So, um, you're going to see that once, you're going to see it from one side to the other, whether you're headed north or you're headed south. Um, because it's going to be open. There's not going to be anything along Salem Avenue. You'll probably see more of it headed south. You're going to probably see that north side more headed south. This is how you come into the corner there with where the station's going to be setting. What you'll actually see of the front of it just coming up Old Salem, if you were to, to look at where it's going to be setting. So you'll probably actually be seeing visually more of the backside, to be honest, um, than what you'll see headed north on Old Salem. Um, because you're on the far right side, you're further east of it. The way the road is super, I'm not sure you're going to see a lot until you're down onto the street. Um, yeah.
Okay. If I look, if I look at this draw, I see Scott's point. But if I look at the elevation of, on the south side on top there, I don't see it. Look at, if you look at the roof on that south elevation, I don't see the big slope that I saw on the previous architectural view. So why am I missing it? This, the roof, this line of roof slash toward the street, toward you as you stand here for that drawing.
Yeah.
From the view you're looking at straight on here, I mean, it's going from this elevation to this elevation. So it's, it's, it's a slope, but it's not a big elevation drop. It's relatively flat. It doesn't look like a lot from this view, but again, this is our artificial view.
But the slope, that's sloping in a fault, opposite direction than what the previous drawing is.
No, this is looking, this is the front of the building, it's sloping toward the front. This is the line at the front. This is the line at the back.
I, I don't think our pitch on these roofs are as much as what we have at City Hall.
Okay.
Also, if you have, if, if, if you have a 212 pitch, which is a pretty low pitched roof, right? Even, even for metal. Um, so if you have a 212 pitch, roughly 117 feet long, and I'm just going off of the numbers and a little over, overhanging beyond that figuring in slope, you're looking at about 20, 20 feet of roof that you, that you see there. So you'd be looking at, if you were, and that was a perfectly straight on, you'd be looking at 50% roof, 50% building. So obviously if I elevate up and I'm on Salem, Salem Avenue, I'm going to see more roof. Now all of a sudden I'm seeing 60, 70% roof, you know, 30 to 40, 40% building.
I, I'm not sure what the pitch of our roof is here. Um, I do know these are, these are based on actual rendering, not, uh, sketches. So we can find out, um, if, so, but proportionally, this is the front of the building. This is the back. So you can see how much is exposed in the front versus the back height and how much roof.
I'm not sure where Scott, Scott, I'm not sure where you're getting the 177 feet.
117, 17 foot. So basically I'm taking the size of the.
We're only 77 feet on the bay.
Correct. But you have a, you have a pitch rate of a roof too. So as you, as you climb up the pitch, plus you have over, overhangs too. It expands the roof, the roof area. So your roof isn't 77 feet. It's pitched up. Therefore it's longer, plus you have overhang, overhang too. We typically add about 50% for that. Um, obviously it depends on the pitch, exactly what you, it could be 30% more to the roof, it could be 40% more to, more to the roof. I'm just going about roundabout, roundabout numbers. So.
Well, um, just, just, um, if it's not counting overhangs, I get what you're saying, but at a 212, pitch at 77 feet in horizontal, you go up 12 feet in height.
Correct. So you're going to have over, overhang over that, over that too. So.
Yeah, it'll be more, but it's a content, just talking about, yeah.
Okay. So maybe we're, maybe we're, again, we don't know the pitch. So maybe we're 15 feet, not 20. The point is, is we're staying as. If I'm saying now on Salem, Salem Avenue. Again, if I look at any other buildings, shed buildings out there, they don't pitch towards the front typically. And I would agree with Kevin, as far as you're going to see more coming down as far as going into that corner, but that is the future expansion area for, for fire training. We're not sure what's going out there, um, or what commercial buildings are going to be out to the front. Um, so, so I would, I, I believe that's supposed to be our, be our front, therefore that should be the most aesthetically a, a peeling section of it. I, I, I think one of the pushbacks, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, is kind of, we've gotten this far and it's what's it going to take for them to be able to switch this? Is this a significant cost, a significant time difference for them? Maybe we should get that question answered. Cause if that answer is no, then it's really just, you know, what do we, what do we like better? If that answers, I mean, I'm just guessing, that's kind of what I'm feeling from, from you Kevin and Janelle is that this may be a significant time and cost change, right?
That's, yeah, that's my biggest concern because they're planning on having us with 30% design, um, next week by Monday. Um, so that tells me that they have, they started the wall designs and stuff. So that there would be changes there.
We can find out.
We'll find out.
We'll bring that back to you and find out because, I mean, this isn't, um, just trying to help, help you understand how, you know, we were trying to keep this project.
I don't, I don't want to push this out two months because we want to change this, change the, the slope of the roof. I don't think it will. Um, because you know, again, just kind of look at the design and it shouldn't change that much of it. Um, but, but maybe, maybe we just get that answer and then go from, from there. How's that?
The one, one comforting thing I could just say is knowing fire station designers, they are very concerned about what their building looks like from the front. And if they were concerned about the slope roof, they, I don't think, if they were concerned about how much roof was, um, my experience with them, is this is their, their baby, their signature is on it. Uh, I think they would be, we probably wouldn't have seen pushback, but, um, so I think one of the things that'd be really good is to get those renderings, you know, ask them if they can't give us this. So we can see what it looked like from the street view from both the new street. And give us what it would look like for, looking at it coming up Salem, Old Salem from the headed north and what it looked like from Old Salem headed south. Um, the only thing that, you know, we're talking about going in behind the station would be a tower. It's not going to be something that's going to block much of the view of the station most likely, if that goes in. Um, commercial will be, uh, essentially where the railroad trees are now with the current house. Um, is the, that's where the commercial zone would be. So I don't see any commercials there. What I can see blocking its view in the future is once the new street goes in, if we have something go in on the street next to the, um, across on the south of the fire station, many buildings that go in there could, you know, would minimize the view to where, your view may be primarily from the new frontage road that we put in. So, but we can, we can get those, get that information on from them.
Perfect. That sounds great. So now next thing, which is simpler, how's this? Can we go to the site, the site plan?
Yeah.
Really, really quick.
I'm bringing that back up.
So the site plan there, so the only concern I have, and I remember seeing this on the original drawings, they even talked about this, I thought, was that, um, when people drive in from Old Salem, they turn in there to, you know, go down to the fire, the fire station there. They've got a couple of street parking spots there that I see. But to me, anybody who really wants to access the fire, the fire station or the, uh, meeting, meeting room, really has to drive around the fires, fire station there, come back in, go past the bays, go past the crew parking, turn around the corner and then, and then park. You know, it's kind of one of those, obviously we could sign it, but if you may be going in an area you're not supposed to be, not really sure. If somebody who's mad because they have to drive too far, they don't see a parking spot, they park in the, the apparatus base. I guess my point by that being is, why don't we push that parking lot out and put an access, access point off of that road right, right there exactly? So people pull in, I turn in, here's my parking, parking spot, right? Make it, make it as easy as you, as you, as you can to get in there.
You're, you're right on with what we wanted to do and how we wanted to have this set up. But, but what you don't see in this view is the slope of the road. And I think we had previous conversations about mirroring this to put the bays over here. So right now we've got a, now we've got a pretty good slope coming down here. We've got a good, um, you know, flat enough area for the turn, flat up here. To bring in another entrance off of here means you've got to flatten it in here. You can't, you can't bring your entrance off of a cross slope of 6% or whatever we've got. Um, so we, we looked at those options. Could you make it work? Yeah, you're going to end up with some weirdness in your road. You might have to push the whole station farther west in order to get down to the slope you, the elevation you need for the bays. Um, I agree with you. It would be better if they, there was a more direct way in, but as the site layout and the grades were coming together, um, we felt like this was just the, the best way to make the traffic flow work. And yeah, it will require good signage. That is, that's going to be a mess. Um, that's why we added these two on-street parking stalls. So if someone's just pulling up or they don't know what to do, the sidewalk configuration here is not set and we want the more direct access from these parking stalls to the front, um, of the building. But, um, but you're right, they're going to have to drive all the way around. And those who are using the meeting room, it's back here anyway. Um, and the entrance is going to be over here. It's, you're right, but dealing with the site constraints we've got, um, this was the, the layout that we came up with that worked.
And if you look at Old Salem, right there in the, in the corner, right, right there, that elevation. And then if you go over to the, uh, northbound lanes, we have, you know, it's supered outward there. So when you, when you come through, even if you're in a taller vehicle, you know, you're not going to see a lot. That's one of the things that's mentioned. You're not going to see probably a lot of the station before it's located from Old Salem, the way that, um, the road is right in, in that area. You're going to see more of it coming in from, uh, from the south. You're actually going to have more of a visual of the, the station.
And, and safety at this intersection was a big concern, having this driveway right here with the slopes involved, we felt like was, was not the best design from a safety perspective.
Okay. All right.
But yeah, that was brought up a lot and, and by FD as well. Um, would be nice if we could do that differently.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else on fire station? Okay. I can go on to the next item if you're ready then.
Go ahead.
Okay. So a couple of quick updates on street projects, um, which road is done, striking has been corrected. Um, that we're closing that project out. Uh, crack sealing, gave you an update in the, in the memo about crack sealing and the additional work that we needed to add on to accomplish the scope of work. Just because of the high amount of cracking in, uh, Zolki and FDO and, uh, one of those streets that's made escaping me the framework of, uh, right now. But we do want to keep our road, uh, maintenance program on track for the next round of surface treatment next year. So we did do an amendment to that project. Um, intersection site distance and vision clearance. We don't have to spend a lot of the time on this tonight. Um, I'll just go through it quickly. And if you want to dig into each intersection more, we can do that. Um, we can do it more in the future as well. But we did evaluate the intersections of concert Alexander 54th, Clearwater and Lauren with Old Salem Road. That was, um, something that council had, uh, requested at a previous meeting and it's something we were starting to look at anyway. So actually had our, our intern, uh, work on, doing the calculations and putting together a memo. She did a great job. Um, the results were incorporated into, into the development code that you just approved, um, for future projects. But, uh, now we'd like to begin working on identifying, proposing a plan, um, to you, to address the existing vision clearance obstructions at those intersections. And because, you know, those are existing conditions, they were in performance with the code at the time and/or approved through subdivisions, whether they were constructed for approval in the past, I, I don't know a hundred percent, but the folks who are in those homes now that would be impacted, really have no, um, had no influence on this in the past. And so our recommendation would be as we look at correcting, addressing any issues on existing streets that the city would look at, um, funding any projects that would be needed for that. And mostly it's about vegetation and fencing really. But that would be our recommendation as we look at moving forward. There don't need, doesn't need to be any decisions tonight. Um, it includes some figures and these make it a little hard to see because you can't see through the red. Like I said, we can look at it more closely later, but the red triangles are what needs to be kept clear based on the new, um, calculations that have been done. So this is Alexander, um, you know, we need to look in these, these triangle areas. Yep, went the wrong way. Sorry. Uh, 54th, I'm going to jump up to Clearwater because this is one we've looked at a lot. Um, you know, there's, there's probably some, some vegetation, maybe fencing in this triangle area that would need to be addressed in order to have better, better vision. And I think this aligns with what we've been hearing from people, um, what everyone's observed, you know, the comfort level people have at these intersections. So again, no action needed on this, but, um, if you were planning to move forward. if you were planning to move forward unless you tell us otherwise with looking at how to address these particular locations.
One of the things that could impact it some is we're also going to be requesting a speed study, you know, on that section of road. Um, if we get something, most likely our request would probably be to look at moving it from the fifty to the forty so that we have it the same as it is from essentially at uh, it would be that for the full length of Old Salem then within the in the city. So that would have changed some of that a little bit if we get that lowered to a forty mile an hour zone.
Yeah, and I should have clarified, what you're seeing here in these graphics is based on a fifty mile an hour speed on Old Salem. With forty, those these lengths do drop a little bit. That's why we set it up in a table for the code, so it doesn't matter um, what the speed on the road is now, it's, you know, at the time the development goes in, it's based on the speed of the road, not the name of the road or the designation of the road. All right, so we'll move forward with that unless you tell us otherwise.
No, that sounds absolutely great, and I'm 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 with you. I think a lot of the issue there is, you know, and I know Dave probably attests this more than I can, and John probably can, is he had to pull out and get pretty much out to the intersection around Salem Avenue to be able to see. Not as much there as as as, you know, Fifty Fourth and some of the other ones. But the other, one of the roads, and this is a twenty-five mile an hour road, one came up to me the other the other day, was Castillo Drive and Zolki. Um, somebody there not very long ago built up their yard significantly, um, which is which is also making that very hard to see, I know it's not fifty mile an hour. Um, but unfortunately without Zolki pushing through all the way to Salem Avenue, it's it's very well used. Um, so if that's one that I could throw in there that you could look at too, maybe.
Yeah, we can, the only part of the um, well, we addressed it based on speed of roads and we did not address local residential streets because we already have the twenty foot setback. But um, we can definitely look at that and see if it's approaching on that twenty foot setback that we've already got there.
Oh yeah, there isn't, they're way, yeah. There's no twenty foot, twenty foot setback, there's not, there's not, yeah. There's the sidewalk, that. Yeah.
Right, yeah, well, and the the measurement is from the intersection point of the, well, it's a little different in these figures, but intersection point of the two curves that they were extended and didn't have the curve. So it's the way it's measured is maybe a little different than people would expect, but, but yeah, we can take a look at that.
Okay, perfect.
All right, um, the next item we have is there's a bridge grant application underway, and this should sound familiar to most of you, I think, because um, an application was submitted in the last round of uh, grant cycle a couple of years ago. And we did not receive a grant at that point, but we did make it through the, a way through the process. Um, and now the next round has applications due November sixteenth. It was actually October sixteenth and they extended it a month because of the fire situation, some of the agencies who wanted to submit. Um, so the information on the bridge itself is the same as the last time, the cost estimate. It was put together, of course, by the county, same cost estimate, they didn't feel that it needed to be changed from that last round. Um, it's it's awarded, it does require a ten point two seven percent city match, I don't know why it's ten point two seven, that's what's in the program. So I can go into more detail if you would like, but this is the, this is the bridge um, on Waverly Drive crossing Cox Creek that goes into Talking Water Gardens, and if you've been down there, it's already been barricaded uh, to eliminate one lane because it's it's very deficient. And it's raining, so uh, we would really like to get it replaced, and we do have ownership of that bridge. So financially, Millersburg is on the hook for making it happen, although the county and City of Albany are very interested in making this happen as well. So, fair and full support. So if you're okay with us moving forward with applying for the grant, the acceptance of the grant would come down the road, you know, and get budgeted for it. Yeah, it's not even until the, I put it here, but I think it's the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-seven construction cycle, um, oh, there it is, right here. Um, if you're in agreement, then we'd like a motion just to kind of formalize that you're good with us submitting the application.
I move to approve city staff applying for the two twenty thousand twenty-five dash twenty twenty-seven local bridge project LBP grants for funding to replace the Waverly Drive Cox Creek Bridge.
I second.
Okay, comments, I'd like to add a comment, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, I was down there yesterday. And that's kind of an out of sight, out of mind situation, and most folks probably don't even really realize it belongs to Millersburg. Most of them probably don't realize Talking Water Gardens isn't back in Millersburg. But that bridge got a lot of use, you got railroad using that bridge to get to their sorting yard out back, you got City of Albany doing maintenance on the system. Uh, you know, Talking Water Gardens and their own park using that bridge. And I couldn't believe the amount of people using the parking lot who were actually walking in Talking Water Gardens. A lot of people use that bridge constantly. So I think, you know, we own it, we own the problem, and using the grant is the best way to go after it. In fact, probably the only way we should be going after it. So I totally support this, and I hope we do too. So any other comments? All right, for those in favor, just go ahead and use our yes, no buttons on the both, please. Okay, we have a support, thank you. This motion passed. Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, trying to keep this on quick. Um, just wanted to give you a quick update on the erosion control program, this is part of our TMVL matrix with DEQ where we were working to implement erosion control requirements in the city. So we have newly implemented a permit for site disturbances of ten thousand square feet or greater, so that applies to every single family home in the city. Um, but how we've done it is with basically a form that needs to be submitted along with building permits. We're trying to make it as as streamlined as possible for all staff to process and review and for builders. Um, we've implemented on two projects so far, although they have had larger disturbances, they weren't single family homes. Um, and we're also nearing completion of the erosion prevention settlement control manual, which goes along with the permit. And again, our our intern is really working on this a lot this uh, last few months. Um, without her here, we probably wouldn't be where we are on it. Um, and she'll give you a presentation in December about her, and she'll probably talk about this more. But wanted to give you a heads up because we will start to be implementing this with contractors and home builders, um, so if you hear anything about it, yes, it is a new program, and we are trying to do it in the most efficient way for everyone as possible at this point. You have any questions on that? All right, we talked, uh, we just wanted to make sure everyone's aware, the city's now in possession of four point four acres off Millerford Drive for future parks. Our recent mode, um, there's some debris on the property that will be, we will have one of those and finally installed and indicating future park will be in this location. At this point, we think that it would probably be good to keep the sign pretty generic, not knowing exactly what all will be contained in the park. Um, would be interested in your feedback on that. Um, and then based on council direction, when the Parks Commission begins to meet in January, this this is something they would be able to start working on a plan for the state. Any comments on on this new park space?
Water Park.
Well, I would imagine Parks Commission will want to give them all the information from the Parks Master Plan, many of them were, several of them were involved in that, and let them uh, get them to provide their move forward with what they think is the community's need, and recommend that to Council, highest priority for the community, was trying to say. But also being aware of maintenance impact that this will have in the long run.
I I think this is just awesome that we're able to do this and and especially, you know, put a park on the north side there. I mean, it's something we've been talking about for a long time and had a lot of residents talk about too. Um, so I just want to throw that out there. Uh, second part of that, if I had to throw my plug in, I I I do know that the Millersburg Park, um, especially during this pandemic times here, we've definitely run out of field space there for sports. Um, so obviously any sort of open field there would be great.
And yeah, we've had some, a little bit of brainstorming on how you could use the space and with the existing constraints that don't want to, I mean, that's really for the Parks Commission to um, you know, work through, but we we can give them some ideas, and one of them, it includes some open space uh, that could be healed for whatever reason. We'll actually talk about the use of the city park next, on the next slide.
Oh, probably, yep. So throwing it out there, there was some issues between, I know, between a couple of different organizations out there, three of them at at one time. So, yeah, there was definitely some constraints as far as space, but yeah, go ahead.
I'm sure if that was big enough, Scott, they even called it the Mcfee Park. Yeah.
Um, one thing we do want to do pretty quick is mention getting a sign installed, but also putting up signage about, kind of like we have at our current park, about dogs on leash, no smoking, you know, those sorts of things that we should probably get up pretty quickly so that people don't, people have an understanding of what's allowed and not allowed on that property from the beginning.
Could we go?
I think about a hundred percent, for sure.
Definitely, definitely.
To show some progress, could we kind of fold into our schedule to remove the foundation that's out there, like can't believe we'd ever use?
Well.
That's part of the debris removal we want to do, but the slab itself might be useful. We've considered having the stem walls cut off and all, everything hauled off and ground smooth, but if we need an ADA stall, um, you know, that slab might be useful for that, uh, you know, painting on it and using it for parking. Uh, before we go straight out, just look at those options.
Okay.
But there are definitely things that we need to get cleaned up before anybody from the public's out there, including a bunch of nails and stuff sticking up from that stem wall and and things like that, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, so the existing park, we did want to talk about that a little bit. Um, there has been significant usage by this fall by youth sports organizations. Some we knew of and had been talking with us, and some we were not aware of, but were made aware of. And there were some conflicts between groups. Um, for the most part, the groups worked it out between each other from what we understood from talking with the folks. Boys and girls clubs did have an agreement with us to use the park. But there were still some organizations not known who we still haven't been able to contact, I'm not sure if they're not out there anymore, but whatever group is doing soccer is not known to us. We, Kevin and I went out there multiple times on evenings to try to connect with them and just say, you know, give them a card, say, hey, why don't you contact us in the future um, about using the park, but we haven't been able to to connect with them out there. So they may be done for the season, I don't know, Scott, if you have knowledge of that.
What you're talking about is AYSO, and 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 their information to coaches as far as practicing are is you can't use Timberidge Park, which is where they have their game, the game fields, I actually like to keep those for games, and to go find a piece of grass somewhere, just not the freeway freeway median. Um, that's what they tell their coaches. So that's what you're getting, that's what you're getting kids out there practicing. So the organization itself doesn't really organize that, so there. Uh, Pop Warner's out there too, I don't know if they've con- conned contacted you. Um, obviously YMCA and Boys and Boys and Girls Club are out there, so, yeah.
Yeah, and and it's always been the case that if if the fields are open and there isn't another team with a youth agreement, that they're first come, first served, and that's for time for practices. But our understanding is that there have been a lot of games being held out there for soccer too, especially on the weekends. And I don't know if that's true, because I've been out there. Um, and so if there are sporting events where they have a location established and they're letting their fans and parents and folks know, we we want to know that they're there. We want to have a liability waiver signed by them as well, so. Um, we'll we'll keep working on that going forward. Um, you know, we wondered if it was AYSO, but hadn't been able to get confirmation of that. Again, for this year, we're probably at the very end of any issues that in the future will definitely want to make contact. Um, but the conflict that came up was uh, blocking of the path for other park users, not associated with the team. And uh, we reached out, again, that was our our motivation for reaching out to all the organizations to say, hey, make sure that your, please make sure your your folks are respectful on how they're using the park for the rest of our users. Um, one thing we are doing is thinking about considering additional signage and or markings on the path to just help identify the need, you know, please keep that clear for other users or things like that, so people aren't setting up their chairs on the path and hanging out there, you know, to watch the games. Which hasn't been an issue in the past, I don't think, but for some reason, that's all it was, so.
One of, one of the reasons it's become an issue this fall is, I don't know if Albany's opened their parks up for use, what use they've opened them up to. I know the school district has been fairly locked down on use their sporting events, their fields and stuff because of COVID on it. So I I think what's happened is as the school, and I'm not sure what Albany's parks have opened up for use, um, that's that's it. And earlier we we heard that we were one of the few locations that were letting people use, use the park as long as they followed and met the guidelines, so.
I think you're right, I know Boys and and Girls Club usually uses Kinder Kinder Park, I know they had some issues with that, hence hence why they're out there this year. Um, a lot of sports aren't even operating, you know, so, or 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 they're they're not operating, they're doing scrimmages, but they're not doing games. Um, you know, it's just a really weird weird time. I think it's awesome for us just to get kids out there, um, and then and then this is kind of that leading into having having more of those youth sports out there, so. But that's just that, that's just my plug plug of that. I thought it was awesome to be out there and see, you know, there was there was one time that I was that I was that I was out there, um, when I went, my team practices, and I thought I saw, I was pretty sure five to six flag football teams. Um, you know, I saw at least four, might have been six baseball teams out there, um, all at the same same time. And I know there was a, there was a group before that, there was a group on the other days. It was just awesome to see that out there, so that's just, that's just me.
And and that's, that was our intent in reaching out to the groups, was not to say you need to leave, but more like, hey, can we can we have some communication so we can make sure the users are coordinated, so everybody who wants to use the park is able to use it. Um, and parking, I didn't hear parking complaints this time, but that is, you know, the more people we get, more parents attending, the more parking becomes an issue, so. And sometimes nearby residents have some concerns about that.
Hang on a second, hey, I I got a thumbs up from Wayne, Wayne, do you want to make comment here? Feel free to do so. You're muted right now, but if you want to make comment, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a comment back on the fire station pitch roof scenario. But you guys have passed that, but the option to do.
Okay, I just, I just saw your.
Yeah, the option.
Well, now that you have bothered, did you have a comment to make?
That that was the only comment was that you do have an option to do solar, even if that roof is pitched the other direction.
Okay, all right. I saw your thumbs up, but I thought it pertained to this conversation, I'm sorry.
No, that was a long time ago.
All right, thank you. All right, sorry, Janelle, go ahead.
That's okay, um, I think I'm done with this item unless you want to give us any feedback or comments on either of the park discussions.
No, that's good.
Got one more item. And this came up, wasn't in your memo because it just came up in a meeting yesterday. But um, quick update on the project gone at the wastewater uh, or water reclamation facility, wastewater plant. Um, the de-watering and composting project. I don't, if you recall, those are two projects at the plant to address the solid situation. They're targeting bidding late November, early December for both projects. This was a call on the de-watering project specifically. Uh, they're ninety-five percent designed, so just about there. Um, the cost estimate right now is five point seven million, so Millersburg's portion is five hundred and seventy thousand. Our CIP shows that at five twenty-three. Um, and the reason for that is there were, at an earlier stage of design, there were some changes that increased that estimate a little bit, this was months ago. Um, that and the CIP is also a year old now, so escalation needs to be taken into account. There are settlement proceeds that will help fund both the de-watering and composting projects, and the remaining project funds will come from the sewer fund. So it's all in the CIP already from last year, and we did budget in this year, this year's budget for some of these funds. We may not, by the time they get the contractor on board and really get going, I doubt they'll expend all that we have budgeted in this fiscal year, but I just wanted wanted to give you an update and let you know that those projects are moving forward.
Okay.
And that's all except for Gantor.
So what's your current thinking on curse creek cleaning or something?
Actually, I just sent the um, contract and an email to the contractor who's done it in the past, who indicated he would still be able to do it this year. I was trying to get a third quote, which I, well, attempt to get a third. Um, the other two. The other two, besides the one we're doing, both declined to quote because they didn't have the equipment to do it. But we needed to go through that process to make sure we had checked all those boxes and he, he being Justin with codes activating, had said that they'd still be able to do it this year. So hopefully I'll hear back from him shortly and we'll get it scheduled. At least to do as much of it as they're able to get to with the conditions right now.
Thank you, okay. Are we finished with city manager report?
Yes.
Forrest, are you still awake, you got anything for us?
I'm still here, I've got about a two and a half hour presentation. No, I have nothing, thank you.
Well, thanks for hanging in there, okay. Moving on then to unfinished business, we had a benefits accomplish, yeah, compens, compensation.
Yeah, compensation, that was a
On this slide.
Right on the slide, I think it got, something got, I thought it got corrected in, it got corrected in one version of the, but it must not have got carried over when it was.
I printed this off over the weekend, so you made, she's a, so.
It's, it's been updated, we caught it and it was updated. So during the work session, we talked again about during the discussion on the employee handbook, we went over the changes to the proposed changes to our leave for vacation, sick leave and holiday, floating holidays. Council was in agreement with those changes, we stated we would add those to our benefits and compensation policy. That has been added, that is a policy that we ask, and it is a benefit and compensation that council approved. So you'll see that, we are asking if you go ahead and, and make those and we would like those changes to be made effective December 27th. That way it would go on to our first payroll in, in the new calendar year, starting the calendar year. So that'd be the simplest for us for switching over to those, those change, that change on that. But it would be, it would, has been in, taken and embedded into policy based on what was in the handbook on there with that. So unless you have any questions on that, that is all I had to report on.
We've been provided with a draft motion, if you should agree with it, which includes the attack date to December 27th. If somebody has a fundamental would like to make the motion, I'd appreciate it.
I make a motion that.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I move for the approval of the benefits and compensation package council policy 100.1 version 2.0 dated October 2020 with changes to leave accruals effective December 27th, 2020.
Second. Okay, a motion from John and a second from Dave. Any discussion? If not, go ahead and vote, please, using the icons. I have four votes, we have five votes, pushing, Carrie, thank you very much, unanimous. Moving on now to new business, I believe that was the only unfinished business item we had, the Frank Lumber Enterprise Zone application, which you heard John Pascal speak to earlier. Which is a resolution, which I don't have in my hand, but is, we can make Forrest read this?
Does not need to be resolutions, disorderant.
I shucks.
Right, Mayor. I motion, I make a motion, I move for approval of resolution 2020-18 waiving employment requirements on standard tax exemption based on rising in productive, productivity and dedicated contributions to workforce training in an Oregon enterprise zone.
Awesome. Second. I have a motion from Scott and a second from Scott McCree. Any, any conversation? If not, please go ahead and vote.
Scott's got it in.
If we'd had to have Forrest read this, we might have been here for another two hours.
You'd honestly, thank you very much, last bottom, no, we've already, we already covered that, haven't we?
We have.
We're done. Any, any closing public comment? We have a Ron and a Wayne out there for sure. So anybody would like to speak to the council, now is the time to do it. Welcome your input. Okay, Harry, none, any closing council comments?
I've just got one and it's building off of Wayne's comment, actually, is he's absolutely correct, throwing this out there for the architects. He actually brought this up with Salem, Salem spine up in Salem, obviously. Their building is a pitched roof, it's a shed, shed roof and they have solar panels on it with the high, the high pitch being south. They just pitched the solar, the solar panels up so you can't actually see them from the, from the front. So it looks pretty, pretty cool, might just take it and take it and take a look at it or point that out to them, so.
Alright. Janelle, do you have something else or?
No, I was trying to say, okay, we'll, we will look at that as, as we discussed earlier, yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're going to go ahead and adjourn at 10:07 PM and thank everybody so much for hanging in there for a long, long time.
You guys, Ron.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night, everyone.
You too.